Something Jeff's prepared for us.
I've never given a speech with notes.
It should be interesting to talk about many of the debates that anybody has between the three of you.
Should be interesting, yeah.
Maybe they'll let, uh, you know, it's just like, I'm sure that...
I'm sure she'll have a few cards that have my name on them.
I'm sure that, you know, it's just like, uh, Scott will have the political forum, things like that. I wonder if Scott will allow Jeff to be an alumnus because it's conflict.
There you go.
I'm gonna tell you that tomorrow when I see you.
Hey, I don't remember.
Hey Alan, did you find that report?
We don't have it, can't get it.
Yeah, you didn't see it in one of them emails? That's where I got it from. It was, uh... Okay.
Okay, I've got one o'clock. Uh, can you hear me? We've got these new fancy microphones here. No feedback, so, uh, I hope you can hear us. Uh, thank you for being here. I'd ask you to, uh, join us in the invocation followed by the pledge led by, uh, Dr. Murphy. Lord, we thank you today for the freedom that we enjoy in this great country. We thank you for that we're a country of laws that were based on biblical principles. Uh, Lord, we pray for our deliberation today. We pray for stability and respect for each other. And, Lord, may our decisions, uh, reflect the greater good. And it's in your name we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge, uh, pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with every team and justice for all.
Well, congratulations to our county staff for putting this room together, and, uh, I think there are a few fine touches that need to be made, but for the most part, I think that, uh, we've got a great room to hold an assembly like this. And, uh, so, uh, we'll, uh, we'll move forward from now on. City County Manager in this room for our work session, so, um, it's, uh, again, a great facility. All right, the first item, uh, for discussion and consideration is the St. Simon's Surf Sailors, and I will introduce Robert Ushry and let him introduce his rest of his team.
Commissioner Brunson, I'd like to thank you for asking us to be here today, and again, as well as the rest of the commission. Uh, we appreciate it very much. It's been, uh, I think the last time we addressed the commission was, was, gosh, back in nineteen ninety-two. The full, the full commission, and at that time, we were giving, giving the commission an update as to what the surf sailors were about. So, it's been many years, so we, uh, we appreciate the opportunity again to acquaint you with who we are and what we're about. I've lived on St. Simons myself, uh, for the last forty-three years. I have a son, and I'm married. I own an architectural firm located on the island. The rest of the officers, Jeff Betts, Jeff, Jeff is our vice commodore. Jeff has a wife and three children. He lives in Brunswick, Georgia. He's a well-developer for H2O Creative. He is also the sailing team coach for Glen Academy and Brunswick High. Clark, Clark Robinson is our treasurer. Clark has a wife and two children. Lives on St. Simons, works for BBNT in commercial banking. Steve D'Amico, Steve, Steve, Steve is our secretary. Steve has a wife and three children. Lives on St. Simons and is a self-employed contractor and designer. Dr. Malcolm Wright is our sergeant-at-arms. He and his wife live on St. Simons. He is recently retired from the practice of internal medicine. Kind of like to give you all a little, little brief history about, about the surf sailors and how we came, came about. Surf sailors as an organization has been active on the beach on St. Simons since nineteen seventy-two. Barney Riley, I think his, his wife Peggy is here today with us, was the original surf sailor. Barney owned a shop above what is now painting the glass on St. Simons and sold sailboats. And a lot of those sailboats are still on the beach today, by the way. Uh, with the advent of beach catamarans, it meant sailing off the beach through the surf was easy because of the stable platform. And the boats were fast, so that appealed to a lot of young, young folks and a lot of, a lot of married folks as well. This type of sailing appealed to young and old alike, and it opened up a whole new way to enjoy the beach community, especially for families. Some of the original members besides Barney and Peggy were Lou and Ann North. Lou is our first commodore. Earl and Kay Hartridge, Pierce Harris, Roy Hodnett and his family were the original surf sailors. The original location for the boats was in the dunes in front of what is now the Beach Club condominiums. The club sponsored sailboat races, beach picnics, and fun sailing events for all comers. In nineteen eighty-three, the Georgia DNR put pressure on those who owned the boats, who owned the sailboats on the beach to remove them from the dune area in front of the beach club. This led the club to search for a more suitable and permanent location for a sailing facility. You'll see in the booklet, uh, provided today, uh, there's a newspaper article which described the process that we went through. Uh, Commissioners, at this time, if I take a minute, let, let me hand out the, I forgot to hand out, forgot the handouts.
Can I get one?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, please.
You'll see in the booklet, uh, we provided today a newspaper article describing the process that led to the sailboat facility being located where it is today. Without going into a lot of detail, which you can read in the article, it was a joint venture involving the county, the Coast Guard, the DNR, and federal government. All which began with the actions taken by the surf sailors. The process took three years with the surf sailors making the initial contact with all the various government agencies. In the end, we were successful in acquiring the land from the Coast Guard, not only for the sailing facility, but for the parking area and dune crossover as well. The facility at its inception was to be county-owned and open to the sailing public. The surf sailors were asked to operate the facility, and we entered into a management agreement proposed by the county. The surf sailors raised the money for the ground improvements and fencing for the sailing facility, and the county paid for the crossover structure and the ground improvements for the parking area. The sailing facility was part of the Glen County Recreation Department and the surf sailors' answer to the recreation director. In order to fulfill the requirements of the agreement, the surf sailors incorporated as a nonprofit 501(c)(7) organization. We were required to carry liability insurance, uh, report a budget, and the club financials to the county every year along with our current fee schedule. Since then, in two thousand and three, the county in an effort to standardize all of the various agreements with different groups operating in county...
Something Jeff's prepared for us.
I've never given a speech with notes.
It should be interesting to talk about many of the debates that anybody has between the three of you.
Should be interesting, yeah.
Maybe they'll let, uh, you know, it's just like, I'm sure that
I'm sure she'll have a few cards that have been written on it.
I'm sure that, you know, that, uh, just like, uh, Scott will have the, the political forum, or like things like that in court.
Mm-hmm.
I wonder if Scott allowed Jeff to be an alumni because it's a conflict.
There you go.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell you that tomorrow when I see you.
Hey, I don't remember.
Hey, Alan, did you find that report?
We don't have it, can't, I don't remember.
Yeah, do you, didn't see it in one of them emails? That's where I got it from. It was, uh... So.
Okay.
You have it? Yeah.
Eric, heard of you.
Yeah. That's them. They gotta take some time. Here.
Okay, I've got one o'clock. Uh, can you hear me? We, we've got these new fancy microphones here. No feedback, and so, uh, I hope you can, can hear us. Uh, thank you for being here. I'd ask you to, uh, join us in the invocation followed by the pledge, uh, led by, uh, Dr. Murphy. Lord, we thank you today for the freedom that we enjoy in this great country. We thank you for that we're a country of laws that were based on biblical principles. Uh, Lord, we pray for our deliberation today. We pray for stability and respect for each other. And, Lord, may our decisions, uh, reflect the greater good. And it's in your name we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge, uh, pledge of allegiance through the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every team and justice for all.
Well, congratulations to our county staff for putting this room together. And, uh, I think there are a few fine touches that need to be made, but for the most part, I think that, uh, we've got a great room to hold an assembly like this. And, uh, so, uh, we'll, uh, we'll move forward from now on. City County Manager in this room for our work session, so, um, it's, uh, again, a great facility. All right, the first item, uh, for discussion and consideration is the St. Simon Surf Sailors. And I will introduce Robert Ushry and let him introduce his rest of his team.
Commissioner Brunson, I'd like to thank you for asking us to be here today and again, as, as well as the rest of the commission. Uh, we appreciate it very much. It's been, uh, I think the last time we addressed the commission was, was, gosh, back in nineteen ninety-two, the full, the full commission. And at that time, we were giving, giving the commission an update as to what the surf sailors were about. So it's been many years, so we, uh, we appreciate the opportunity again to acquaint you with who we are and what we're about. I've lived on St. Simons myself, uh, for the last forty-three years. I have a son and I'm married on an architectural firm located on the island. The rest of the officers, Jeff Betts. Jeff, Jeff is our vice commodore. Jeff has a wife and three children. He lives in Brunswick, Georgia. He's a well-developer for H two O Creative. He is also the sailing team coach for Glen Academy and Brunswick High. Clark, Clark Robson is our treasurer. Clark has a wife and two children, lives on St. Simons, works for BBNT and Commercial Banking. Steve D'Amico, Steve. Steve, Steve is our secretary. Steve has a wife and three children, lives on St. Simons and is a self-employed contractor and designer. Dr. Malcolm Wright is our sergeant-at-arms. He and his wife live on St. Simons. He is recently retired from the practice of internal medicine. Kinda like to give you all a little, little brief history about, about the surf sailors and how we came, came about. Surf sailors as an organization has been active on the beach on St. Simons since nineteen seventy-two. Barney Riley, I think his, his wife Peggy is here today with us, was the original surf sailor. Barney owned a shop above what is now painting the glass on St. Simons and sold sailboats. And a lot of those sailboats are still on the beach today, by the way. Uh, with the advent of beach catamarans, it meant sailing off the beach through the surf was easy because of the stable platform. And the boats were fast, so that appealed to a lot of young, young folks and a lot of, a lot of married folks as well. This type of sailing appealed to young and old alike, and it opened up a whole new way to enjoy the beach community, especially for families. Some of the original members besides Barney and Peggy were Lou and Ann North. Lou is our first commodore. Earl and Kay Hartridge. Pierce Harris, Roy Hodnett and his family were the original surf sailors. The original location for the boats was in the dunes in front of what is now the Beach Club condominiums. The club sponsored sailboat races, beach picnics, and fun sailing events for all comers. In nineteen eighty-three, the Georgia DNR put pressure on those who owned the boats, who owned the sailboats on the beach to remove them from the dune area in front of the Beach Club. This led the club to search for a more suitable and permanent location for a sailing facility. You'll see in the booklet, uh, provided today, uh, there's a newspaper article which described the process that we went through. Uh, and Commissioners, I, at this time, if I take a minute, let, let me hand out the, I, I forgot to hand out, forgot the handouts.
One of, one of the most important ones.
Can I get one?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, please. I didn't mean to.
You'll see in the booklet we provided today a newspaper article describing the process that led to the sailboat facility being located where it is today. Without going into a lot of detail, which you can read in the article, it was a joint venture involving the county, the Coast Guard, the DNR, and federal government, all which began with the actions taken by the surf sailors. The process took three years with the surf sailors making the initial contact with all the various government agencies. In the end, we were successful in acquiring the land from the Coast Guard, not only for the sailing facility, but for the parking area and dune crossover as well. The facility at its inception was to be county-owned and open to the sailing public. The surf sailors were asked to operate the facility, and we entered into a management agreement proposed by the county. The surf sailors raised the money for the ground improvements and fencing for the sailing facility, and the county paid for the crossover structure and the ground improvements for the parking area. The sailing facility was part of the Glen County Recreation Department and the surf sailors answered to the Recreation Director. In order to fulfill the requirements of the agreement, the surf sailors incorporated as a nonprofit five oh one C seven organization. We were required to carry liability insurance, uh, report a budget, and the club financials to the county every year, along with our current fee schedule. Since then, in two thousand and three, the county, in an effort to standardize all of the various agreements with different groups operating county facilities, including the surf sailors, the Historic Society, St. Simons Boating and Fishing, and some others, the county proposed a lease agreement under which we now are operating. Copy of that lease, copy of the lease which we are operating in is also in that booklet. The county requirements for the surf sailors remain very much the same as it was in the beginning, but instead of an arrangement whereby we operated the facility on behalf of the county, we now had a lease. The facility operates with a part-time manager, a groundskeeper, and volunteers. We keep a website, Facebook page, and telephone, so we can be contacted about access to the facility and our services. Office space for key pickup and lease arrangements is currently provided by me at my offices on St. Simons at no charge. The surf sailors have been an iconic part of the beach scene now for over forty-five years, and the sailboats are featured in many advertisements about the Golden Isles. The sailing facility is one of the more unique aspects of our beach. Sailing at many beach communities has now become almost impossible. Parking a sailboat on the beach overnight and for an extended period of time is not allowed at much beach, at most beaches, including here. The facility allows locals and visitors alike, uh, with a desire to sail or learn to sail, an affordable place to exercise their hobby. Our aim has always been to open, is, is, has always been to be open to all that want to sail at the beach, and at the same time, keep the cost affordable. Sailing is a sport, as a sport is growing in our area. Now, with the advent of sailing teams in local high schools, there will be a constant supply of young people looking for a way to continue sailing. And with that, I'd like to ask Clark, uh, Clark Robson, uh, he'll give us a breakdown of our budget. Clark?
Commissioners, please reference the internally-prepared twenty eighteen budget and receipts for twenty seventeen on the screen and in your handouts. St. Simon Surf Sailors fiscal year ends November thirtieth and begins December first. The sailing facility received approximately thirty thousand dollars of rental income from sailboats, paddleboarders, windsurfers, and kayak occupants annually. St. Simon Surf Sailors has budgeted approximately thirty thousand dollars in expenses. On an annual basis, anywhere from twenty to fifty percent of total expenses are used for facility repairs, maintenance, improvements, at no cost to the county. At fiscal year-end, there was sixty thousand in cash. This balance has accrued over the last several years. We plan to use the majority of these funds to make improvements related to our proposed plan today at no cost to the county. Other uses of funds will go towards helping fund watersport events and providing opportunities and educating future sailors. I emphasize the statement "no cost to the county" because the other party will present their plan in a few minutes, and I think that there's some missing dialogue, and I encourage you to have a discussion about the cost, the funding of that project, the cost to the taxpayers, the county, and to the visitors. Now, back to the cash flow we discussed previously. This cash flow is derived from a hundred and twenty-five spaces of equipment storage. It's important to note that this is not the total number of participants utilizing the facility. For example, four fa- families own one sailboat. That is at least fifteen or sixteen individuals assigned to one boat. Several sailboats are duly owned. All boats have friends, family, and random beachgoers jump aboard for a leisurely sail or help crew during our regattas. The entire community and visitors to this county benefit from this facility. It's not just a hundred or more individuals. We invite and are happy to host transients and visitors, and any visitors, to sail using this facility. The facility has grown over the last five years to the point we are full. We have a waiting list of about ten to fifteen boats. We are in the process of managing this list, changing bylaws, and attempting to accommodate everyone who wants to be active. Before I pass this along to Jeff Betts, I want to end my presentation by providing some insight. I grew up in an area where I did not have an opportunity to learn how to sail. Four years ago, I went to sailing school, and the most important thing my instructor told me at the time was to go back home and find somewhere to sail. They will teach you a lot more than just sailing, and he was right. I joined this sailing facility, and not only did I learn how to sail, I've learned how to fiberglass, do other boat repairs. Malcolm has even taught me how to windsurf, and I think it is our responsibility to provide this opportunity to others. I have a eight-year-old stepdaughter who went to sailing camp last summer, and all during the off-season, she has asked me constantly whether or not she will be old enough this year to go to the beach and sail with us in our regattas. With your help, I intend to tell her that she can sail for many years to come, and we can all provide the next generation an opportunity to sail off the beach of St. Simons. I encourage you to do the right thing and save this sailing facility. Thank you. Jeff?
Hello, my name's Jeff Betts. I'm the vice commodore of St. Simon Surf Sailors. I'm also the head coach of the Glen Academies and Brunswick High's high school sailing teams. Uh, and I'm also a U.S. Sailing Certified Small Boat Sailing Instructor. I've been active in surf sailors for the past four years and, uh, joined, uh, by purchasing a Hobie fourteen from an eighty-plus-year-old gentleman that had, uh, had, was retiring from sailing. He sailed all of his life. He'd been a member of the club since the seventies and was ready to pass his boat on to the next generation. Um, I purchased his boat for four hundred and fifty dollars, um, and he just wanted to know that the boat would be well taken care of and, and enjoyed by, by the future of sailors. Uh, after a summer of sailing that boat, my sons and I quickly realized that that boat wasn't big enough for us, and we needed to be able to accommodate more friends, so we've since upgraded boats twice, um, never spending more than two thousand dollars on a boat. Um, and my point is that it's not a small group of sailing elitist sailors. Uh, we are a, a group of families that live here locally that enjoy sailing at the beach, um, and have, that's, that we've discovered an enjoyable and affordable way to get out on the water. Uh, last year, I was elected to be the chairman of the race committee, um, and we helped organize and run the King of the Island Racing Series, which has been running since nineteen seventy-five. It's a ten-day race series held throughout the summer, uh, typically with three to five races held on a racing day. I've encouraged my high school sailors to, to get involved in catamaran sailing and racing, as it will help them hone their sailing and boat handling skills, and then give them the opportunity to compete in their off-season during the summer. It's also, Surf, St. Simon Surf Sailors is the most economical way to become a sailboat owner in the Golden Isles, and allows them to use their hard-earned sailing skills to take their parents out for enjoyable rides, learn the responsibility of boat ownership, and the art of fiberglass boat repairs. The after-race cookouts are enjoyed by the whole family, and the post-race discussions build lifelong friendships that span generations. St. Simon Surf Sailors also hosts, uh, the Wind Fest, which is an annual wind sports festival, and they offer demo surfing equipment or windsurfing equipment from leading vendors and free windsurfing lessons to the public. Uh, St. Simon Surf Sailors also is host to the Georgia Cup. It's an annual stand-up paddleboarding race which takes place off East Beach and into the St. Simon Sound and back. It's an event that's for all ages, uh, even have a class where you race with your dog on the boat with you. Uh, we're currently planning an event with Wind Sports for Wounded Warriors. They're an outstanding group of local kiteboarders who host and teach wounded warriors from all over the country how to kite surf. Um, most of our organized activities take place in the spring and summer, but many of us are out on the water year-round, enjoying the natural surroundings. During our time on the beach, we frequently take photos of families standing in front of our boats. We clean up trash that's left behind by others. We share local information to those approaching us on land and perform lifesaving rescues to those stranded on or between sandbars during the rising tides, usually after the lifeguards have either left for the evening or for the season. As the newly-elected vice commodore of St. Simon Surf Sailors and local high school sailing coach, I'll do all that I can to continue to grow the sport of sailing in the Golden Isles and ask for your support in helping us to continue this forty-five-plus-year tradition of beach sailing for generations to come. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Good afternoon. My name is Steve D'Amico, and I'm the secretary for the St. Simon Surf Sailors. I would like to discuss our observations of the site, brief history with the Coast Guard Beach Park Design Committee, and what we would like to propose for our sailing facility on this site. Over the last few years, the surf sailors have seen a dramatic change in the use of the Coast Guard Beach Parking Lot. More so probably than most because of the amount of time we spend there. We have seen ever-increasing numbers of visitors enjoying the beaches that we call home. The need for additional parking, increased space for the bathhouse, and better access to the beach are the primary elements that need to be addressed. With these changes, the surf sailors have been anticipating a change in our facility for a number of years as well. During the last few months of two thousand and seventeen and into two thousand and eighteen, the Coast Guard Beach Park Design Committee held a series of workshops through the WLA Land Planning Firm. These public meetings were to gather information as to what the residents want for this particular site. Along with concerned residents, the surf sailors were consistently a large part of the public meetings in charrettes from October twelfth through January twenty-fourth. On a few occasions, we had casual conversations with the lead designer. As a major stakeholder in the project, we asked to be part of the design team to work out the needs of the sailing facility and to help provide vital information for the redevelopment of this site. At these meetings, we were promised that place on the design team, yet we were never contacted for our experience, knowledge of the site, or what is best for the sailing community. On the January twenty-fourth meeting, two conceptual plans were presented with the implication that one of the two would be chosen for the project. To our dismay, the plans presented either reduced our facility to an unsustainable size or eliminated the sailing facility altogether. We were shocked that after all of the effort we made to contact them and be part of the design process, that they would just throw us out. After this meeting, with public outcry for the proposed plans, concern for the possible elimination of our thirty-one-year-old sailing facility, the surf sailors put together a four-member team that would again try to work with the design team. Again, the surf sailors reached out to this committee. Finally, at this point, a meeting was set up with a small group from the design committee and the surf sailors. We expected the design committee with the lead designer to be at the meeting so we could try to begin to resolve our differences. At the meeting, we were told the lead designer would not be able to attend. At this time, we submitted our requirements for the surf sailors and were told they would be forward, forwarded to the lead designer. We expected to hear back from them, uh, for them, their designer to discuss how to move forward and if we needed to set up a time in the future for another meeting. After some time, we again contacted the design committee about the revised plans, and we were told that instead of continuing with the development of the plans, they wanted to meet with the county commission at this workshop. We then contacted Commissioner Brunson to ask if we could appear at the meeting as well. As of today, we still have not been asked to participate in any of the development of the plans with the Coast Guard Beach Park Design Committee, and this is where we are. As I mentioned earlier, we understand the need for change at this site and have been anticipating it for the last few years. With the growing of number of people coming to St. Simons, the parking lot and bathhouse need to be improved. In order to facilitate these improvements, we have two proposals that we would like to discuss. To start, I would like to show an image of the existing site for orientation and is, and perspective as to what we are working with. On this site, at the top of the screen is facing north, so the beach is to the right of the screen at the east. Uh, the outline in red is the boatyard, uh, on the right-hand side of the screen. Just to the left of that, almost centered, is the existing bathhouse. Uh, on the left-hand side of the screen, all the way to the west, is the existing Coast Guard Station, and the area in the middle between the bathhouse and the Coast Guard is the existing parking lot. On the north, uh, on the northeast corner, the top right of the screen is the main access to the beach. It's a boardwalk, and on the very, uh, bottom right-hand side of the screen, uh, there's a, the red diagram shows the southern access, which is a secondary access to the beach as well. This next slide. This next slide. In our second, or, sorry, let me go back here. This next slide is our initial proposal. In this proposal, we plan to reduce the dimensions of our facility at the northern edge by about eighty feet. This will allow for the implementation of new park facilities at the main boardwalk and allow for expansion of the bathhouse as needed. At the southwestern edge, we propose to expand the failing, sailing facility to allow for a rental fleet and transient boaters. Typically, these boats have been left on the beach overnight. However, it is our understanding that the DNR does not allow for any items to be stored on the beach overnight. Therefore, in order to continue a rental program that so many visitors enjoy and space for transient sailors, it is imperative that we have space dedicated for them. In addition, this proposal continues to maintain the lifeguard and police facilities incorporated in the plan. This proposal would be minimally invasive to the site and would not affect beachgoers at all. Additionally, we could implement this plan at any time and at no expense to the Coast Guard Beach Park Design Committee or the county. In our second proposal, we take a bit more dramatic and invasive approach to the redesign. This proposal implements the rebuilding of the entire sailing facility with a new orientation east and west. This new orientation will allow for a far greater amount of space for any new facilities from the Coast Guard Beach Park Design Committee while maintaining the space needed for boats, windsurfers, kayaks, and paddleboards. As with the initial plan, this proposal incorporates transients, a rental program, as well as incorporating the lifeguards and police within the plan. Though this proposal allows for a considerably larger area open for development, it would require more time and investment in design and financial resources on our part. This next slide is the latest proposal from the Coast Guard Beach Park website. Though we understand that these plans are still conceptual at this stage, I would like to point out a couple of misleading items in regards to sailing and boating on St. Simons that are said to be resolved or accommodated for. First, in the specifications circled at the bottom of the page in red, uh, the specifications call for thirty-five spaces for boats along the southern edge of the property. In reality, scaled out, there are actually only sixteen spaces, far less than the amount of sailors, windsurfers, kayakers, and paddleboards currently there now. In addition to the improperly numbered spaces, the idea of trailering a boat to the beach for the day and dropping it off at roundabout number twenty-three, which is located at the bottom right of the image of the plan, uh, is an impractical use of the space that would ultimately not be used for a boat drop-off. For a local or a visitor coming to spend the day at the beach and sail, it would take about two hours to trailer the boat, drop it off at the roundabout with pedestrians, raise the thirty-foot-tall mast with a minimum of two people, transfer the boat to the beach wheels, find a parking place for the boat and trailer, then get back to the roundabout to get the boat to the beach before rigging any sails at the waterline. At the end of the day, all of this would have to be done again, as well as for the visitor having to find a place to store the boat overnight. A boat drop-off is just not a practical for a local sailor or someone in for the weekend. I use these points to reinforce the idea that the surf sailors are the only ones who know what requirements are for us and how to make the space work best for this facility. This last slide shows an overlay of our second proposal and how it could integrate into the design committee's latest plan. As you can see, we are willing to work, we are willing to relocate and reduce our footprint in order to work with the Coast Guard Beach Design Committee and the county. We propose to move the facility at no expense to the committee or the county while potentially reducing our requirements from the existing seventy-one permanent slips to forty permanent slips, ten rental and transient slips, and maintaining space for windsurfers, paddleboards, and kayaks. Over the last few years, we have had a consistent membership and a waiting list of about ten to fifteen people. We would like to incorporate those in our management of our facility as well. In addition to the major changes in our location and size, we also propose to have a day manager and to make adjustments, efficiencies, and improvements to the operation of the facility. The day manager will open and close the facility to the public, maintain the maintain the grounds, and be able to meet transient boaters at the facility. As for this facility improvements, we propose to work with the design team to integrate our thoughts and our needs for the surf sailors with the overall design concept. Our goal for the improvements is to make the surf sailing facility look and feel as if it is part of the entire park renovation. We feel there is no one better suited to help with the redesign of the sailing facility than the surf sailors ourselves. We want to be a part of this team. We want to be at this location, and we know the public wants us to be here as well. The community has been fortunate to have such great access for sailing and water sports. Many in the community, including the surf sailors, would like to continue to have that similar access for future generations. Thank you.
Commissioner, any questions for any individual or group?
Yeah, I have one. How many boats are currently stored at the facility?
Commissioner Stanball, we've currently got 70, 70 boats at the facility now.
They're stored there full-time?
Yes, they are. Well, that's, no, those are catamarans. In addition to the 70 boats, we've got windsurfers. The windsurfers and the paddleboards and the kayaks are in the sheds. There's some sheds in the facility. They reside there.
Any other questions?
Maybe I missed something. Statement was made that the surf sailors are the only ones qualified for what?
I think that was a statement that Steve made. I think the impetus of his statement was that we're qualified because we've been there for so long to understand what it takes to launch a sailboat on the beach. Of course, if you look at the whole United States, Commissioner Booker, we are obviously not the only ones that know how to launch a sailboat. Yes, sir.
So I got a question about one of the financial aspects. So you all have had this property with a $1,000 lease.
Yes, sir.
Now the bank account of over $63,000. I'm sure you're aware that many of the folks have suggested that they pay $2,500 to have the same deal that you all have. But the one thing that troubled me is the recent Facebook post that you all put out of a special VIP membership where somebody could buy a key for $50 to your enclosed space and then pay $50 a year to walk into your enclosed space, which is basically county property. So you're selling access to non-boaters so they could come in and use your ice machine and your grill. Do you really think that's the way you all should be approaching this difficult time? Selling people from either the county or outside county a special VIP access to their own property?
I think the way that we were hoping that would be reviewed is those, these are potential sailors, that people come down there to sail with us, and they have access as well. Now, so far to date, Commissioner Murphy, we do not have anybody signed up. These are ideas, we're trying to reinvent ourselves. I think that's kind of where this is going. The surf sailors are going to have to reinvent ourselves in terms of the way we manage it, in terms of the way we approach the public, and we understand that. And in fact, we've been talking about it since the first master plan that was proposed several years ago. We were going to reduce the facility size. I think at our annual meetings, we talked about that every time. Obviously, if we reduce the number of boats that we currently receive revenue from, from 70 to 40, there's an idea, how are we going to pay for some of these new ideas we have? Some of the ideas are, and we've heard this from some of the public, is we want the sailboat facility open all the time. Well, that means we'll have to have another manager. Right now, we have a manager that manages our finances and manages the memberships, but what we need is a manager that would be on-site to manage the facility. That costs money. And so, we're going to have to think outside of our current box and come up with ways to continue offering the services and hopefully expand our services.
Well, I understand all that, but that's admirable. And I'm certain there is a reason why you all need to change the way you've done business for so many years, but to sell, it just put a bad taste in my mouth that in this time of turmoil and conflict and discussion about where this club is going, that you all would be selling access to county property. Basically, it didn't stipulate that they had to know how to sail or ever sail at all.
Refundable.
Right.
Everybody pays it.
Well, right now, the point that Dr. Murphy, or Dr. Wright was trying to make, get my doctor's mixed up, was trying to make that our key deposits are refundable. Obviously, we have a $50 key deposit that's refundable.
Well, I get that. I'm talking about the $50 annual that was.
Right.
Let me ask you one more thing. So in the packet handout, the last lease you gave me was signed by the county in 2008. And Mr. Rusty just gave us a package that had a lease signed in 2016. Did the county actually sign that? They did not. Okay, so the last signed lease we have is 2008. Is that correct?
2003 is the last signed lease.
So why is this one in there? I don't know. Why is that one in there, Mr. Rusty?
That was the one, the lease, the 2016 lease was given to us and asked for our signatures. We signed it with the understanding that it would be signed and we'd get a copy back. That's why it's in there. We have since operated under that lease. We've paid the fees as dictated by the county attorney's office for 2016 and 2017. That's why it's in there. And you are right. It's not signed.
You didn't think it was important to follow up, see if the county was going to approve it or anything like that?
Well, I guess it's naive to take, okay, Commissioner. We took the county's attorney's office at their word saying, I think the last phone call we got, it's no problem, everything's in order. We followed up and it just never, we just never saw it. But I don't disagree. I think we're smarter now. In fact, I thought it was signed until, I think, Alan Oars had requested a copy of what we had, and when I got ready to send it to him, I flipped to the back page and realized it was not signed. That's in there because it's simply what we're using right now is what dictates the way we operate.
Eric, can you speak to that?
Certainly, certainly. So when the lease expired in 2013, during the renewal period, that was 2008, 2013, when that expired, staff started to work with the surf sailors to renew that lease. About that period of time, what I recall was when the parking fee discussion was occurring and there was some discussion about what to do with that space. That was a prejudice where we are now. So staff was basically held off on doing that until a plan was submitted to implement. So I did not feel like we were in a way of putting them in a position of misleading them. It was more a matter of a holdoff until the county commission wanted to concede a lease pending the outcome of the review. But that was around the time when the parking fee was being discussed. So the lease that's in the packet was then presented to the board of commissioners.
Okay, wasn't an oversight?
It was not an oversight at all. It was very much intentional because the lease that was being discussed would have come through that period of time. That, again, it's a, even if it were a lease, it's a six-day termination period with the lookout for the county commission. But because of that, it never was placed before the county commission for a consideration. So what the county's operating under now is basically a month-month lease and the term division of the prior, the last signed lease, 2003, on through 2013. And that's the one that's being used to that. It's the same fee. So they're still paying their annual fee. The fee hasn't changed. So that's the history of where that got where it is now. But it was never presented or signed or approved by the board.
Who has a key?
Who has a key?
Who has the fits around it?
All the, anyone that's a member has a key.
And then the county staff?
We've, the county has their own locks that they prefer to use. We have given the county staff keys before, but what we do, we double lock the gate. We have a lock within a lock.
So they still would need one of you all?
No, no, they don't. Their key, right. Right, well, it's their lock, but it unlocks the gate. Right, yes.
Georgia Power also has a lock on that same chain so that they can get in the facilities if they need to.
Is the surf club, is it a 501(c)(3)?
It's a 501(c)(7).
So are you allowed by law then to sell these memberships that you've been advertising in that particular designation, tax-exempt designation?
You mean for the sailboats?
No, no. The one that we discussed previously, is that a legitimate?
So far, Commissioner Murphy, we haven't sold one yet.
So let me ask you this, then. Mr. D'Amico was characterizing the relationship or lack thereof with WLA as being thrown out. Tried to work with our design team. We've not have been asked to participate. I think you and I both know about two months ago, when three iterations, I think five, were presented, roughly two months ago, I hand-delivered those to you.
Yes, you did.
Okay. So it's not like you've not been aware. The most recent iteration that you all have, did you share that with this team in your effort to participate?
We have literally put the one that's up on there, that's up there now, that's been prepared in the last few days.
So this process has been going on, let's say, four or five months? And you have, you're offering the last four or five days?
Well, we were, it was our understanding, we weren't the designers. They had the design team. It was our hope that we can meet with the design team, and I think at one time Scott McQuaid and I had a discussion that, oh yeah, what we'll do is we'll lay out some tracing paper, take some squares and move them around, and maybe come up with something. That was the meeting that we hoped to have the first time that we sat down. When we got there, the designer wasn't there. I think at the time, we understood he had the fluke, which we understood, but all we had was a potential of actually what we discussed some years before of cutting off a northern part of the park. We offered that as a starting place. And we'd hoped to really sit down and kind of hash this out. That was our hope. And it just never occurred.
I think I gave them the expectation, see if you can do better, and I never heard back. So I guess, my boy, there has been a separation of efforts here. And I don't think the characteristics that Mr. D'Amico made was necessarily entirely accurate. This team has been unwilling to work with you all. I think part of it is that you all have, you know, from your perspective, a wonderful facility. And I've told you before, if I had the capability of driving up to the beach on a busy day with all the parking jammed up and just drive into my chain-linked fence with barbed wire on the top and get you all to cook me a burger, I think I would be resentful too. But at the end of the day, I think if you all had offered something like that four or five months ago, we wouldn't be here right now.
We weren't asked to offer anything.
Well, I think I offered that to you by showing those three different iterations, saying, see what you can do better. I don't want to argue with you because.
Well, I don't want to argue with you. Right, well, I don't, I agree with you, Commissioner Murphy. You did exactly what you said you did. And what we did, we contacted the design team because it was our understanding we were going to be working with them. I contacted Scott, who I felt like had his handle. He was the one that was communicating with Keys. And I thought, well, I think at one point you even suggested, well, maybe at some point, you and Keys need to get together and talk about this.
I probably did.
You did, and I agree.
Okay, any other? Yeah, I have one more thing. It's been brought up about the lease payments that are made every year. I have two issues. I don't want to get too far in the giggly weeds here, but I was told it's $1,000 a year. Whenever you just lease, under paragraph 3, subsection H, this lease is intended by the parties to create a taxable leasehold interest. Leasees shall be responsible for any taxes or other charges imposed upon this interest or upon the operation of the premise. Should a court or other body determine that lease's interest is not taxable, lease's rental during the remainder of the lease at any renewal term shall be increased by an additional sum equal to the state and county, including school district taxes that would have been imposed had the interest been taxable. That's never been done. The other thing is under section J, collateral, leasing may use its leasehold interest created in this document as collateral for a loan without permission from county but subject to terms of this instrument. I don't like either one. I don't like that term at all because now that's a $4.4 million piece of property. I'm not sure what it was worth, what, 50-some thousand in 1972? But this lease, regardless of what happens with the boat thing, and I'd like to see something worked out so both sides are happy, this lease needs to definitely change, and the lease rate needs to be reflective of the value of the property, not just $1,000 a year since 1972, whenever that started. Because I guarantee you, county taxes are a lot higher than $1,000 on a $4.4 million piece of lease property.
Any other questions?
Commissioner Booker?
If this, if the renovations go through, will you all not be able to sail?
Well, during the time we were doing the renovations, yes, sir, that'll happen. Hopefully, this could be done rather quickly.
But I'm saying, once completed, will it just totally stop you all from sailing?
Oh, you're talking about the plan that's presented by the master plan committee? Well, I think what'll happen in reality, there's only 16 boat slips there. So obviously, talking about an elite group, 16 would certainly be that. The other thing is the complication of launching a sailboat. It's not as easy as just taking it down to that cul-de-sac and putting it up. Typically, if you want to go sailing, it's a long process to get the boat ready, about two-plus hours, two-plus hours to take it off the beach. What'll happen is people just won't do it anymore. It'd just be too complicated to go down there for a day.
Nobody will be stopping you.
Nobody will be stopping them. It just won't happen. It's just too much effort to do that. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I used to sail over there, many years ago, and I do it, that kind of. And I understand what it takes to have a boat there. You'll get it into a boat, I don't know. And in my view, if you're sailing on a consistent basis, that is the best place. I think it's in Canada to have a place to launch boats and go sail. Of course, things have changed over time. And we have this recommendation to do a wholesale rebate of the parking lot and that whole area, which I think is a good thing to do. But we've got conflicts here. And what I want to say about that, it looks like we've got a couple of things going on. We've got a lease that needs solely needed to be updated. We just went through that with the St. Simon's Island Boat Club.
Yes, sir.
At the Marina. That's our facility. Only until, only until a problem arose did the board get engaged in it. And that's what's going on here. The board is just now getting engaged with this issue of this lease and what's going on with there. And I believe that we can look that up. Years ago, there was some problems up in the hollow river park.
Yes, sir, I remember those.
You know, the, where the commissioners there at that time worked that out. And they set out and did some rules. Park Association, which is founded in (c)(3), agreed to them, and they operate by those today. I keep those tabs on that since it's in my district. And this is a win-win for the county and my team. Things are working like they ought to be working. But there's going to be some changes over here. The question is, how do we make it work for everybody? I'm going to keep it in there. This board has done everything it can do with the money we have to accommodate people who want to play baseball, people who want to play tennis, people who want to skateboard. We made some investments around this county. And with the surf sailors that have been over there for so long, I think we need to do all we can to keep that there, you know, that activity there.
I appreciate that, Commissioner. Thank you.
The back and forth about different meetings everybody's had and who was engaged and at what level and at what depth and who did what, it gets us nowhere.
I agree.
If it takes, if it takes, I don't know, all of us going over there, walking that area for a site visit and look at it, everybody making their case. area, or a site visit, and look at it, everybody making their case over there, what, what they need, with that piece around, I mean, I'm for doing that. I don't know if that's the best way to go about it, but, but, but I want to see the group that wants to improve with the Coast Guard facility, with that parking, okay? I, 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 I want to see them realize their plans to the fullest extent that they can. But again, we have a conflict, and I have spoken with them and told them I wanted, what I wanted is accommodation somehow, and I didn't want to get in the middle of it.
Yes, sir.
Told them that, because it doesn't work real well when you make it in the middle of it.
Uh, yes, sir.
But, uh, maybe if we could have insurance from both sides, if they'll go back and sit down, and, and, you know, listen to each other, come up with something, and come back, I don't know, come back to us, if the board decided that time, but, but I know people want to get the processes going right now, but I'm not willing to go on anything myself, except to, um, see both parties reenage, and, uh, listen to each other, and, and, and see what we can do.
I would like nothing more, Commissioner, thank you.
All right. Go ahead, uh, let's go. So the Coast Guard, uh, stage master plan.
Should I go ahead, Alan?
Okay.
Scott and I came before the Commission last April to request your support for a master plan for a new Coast Guard Beach Park. We appreciated your unanimous support to partner with us on this vital project. We're excited to be here today to report great progress towards a first-rate public, public beach access for our county and for our valuable visitors. First, I'd like to take a minute to remind the Commission of the ambitious goals that we set almost a year ago, and to congratulate everyone who has contributed to this countywide process. The content of this slide is from our presentation last April and outlines the goals that we set for this project. Thanks to the commitment of many, we are able to present a plan that will improve the quality of life for all residents of Glen County and prepare our community for the future. We have heard from literally thousands of people over the last year, people who have different connections and interests in the study area. One thing for sure is that this place is important to the residents of Glen County. They participated because they care about our community and they care about its future. This slide shows many of the people and organizations who have had input into this process. For example, Jack Kilgore became involved as a member of the Master Plan Committee. His enthusiasm was contagious, and he wanted to spread the news to the Shared Vision Partners. Are you having a hard time here? To this end, he scheduled and made presentations at two meetings of the Shared Vision Partners, and then had many personal conversation, conversations. He sees the Beach Park Master Plan as an opportunity to put the shared vision statement into action. I now want to turn for a moment to Glen County's strategic plan. This slide comes from your guiding document, which sets out what you want to do and how you want to do it. This transformative project is consistent with your vision of the future and is creating a successful model of public-private partnerships, working together, setting standards of excellence, and enhancing our quality of life. An ambitious project like this one will impact our community in meaningful ways, especially teamed up with the Historical Society's 3.6 million dollar investment in this same area. The new beach park will realize many of the county's key strategic goals for planned and managed growth, a safe community, a great place to live, and exceptional customer service, or in this case, an exceptional visitor experience. We have embraced input from county staff and Commissioner Murphy on all the issues, and have been grateful for their active participation and guidance. Now, I'd like to introduce Keys Williamson of WLA Studio in Athens, Georgia, who will present the concept for the new Coast Guard Beach Park. A copy of the concept is in your briefing book, so please have that ready when Keys begins. The Master Plan Committee selected Keys last summer through an RFP process, and he's been leading the project team since August. Through the work of Keys and his team, we have learned an incredible amount. In your briefing book are some of the key reports that he has produced. This is a complex site, and the plan that Keys will present proposes viable and comprehensive solutions that will prepare us for the future. I'd like to introduce Keys Williamson.
Good afternoon. So, as Sherry mentioned, my firm put together a team of both local and regional consultants to look at all of the issues that were included in the RFP. And the RFP broke the issues that the Master Plan Committee wanted addressed into four broad areas. There were transportation issues, there were environmental issues, there were facility issues, and there were management issues. And each of those four categories had about a dozen specific issues that they wanted to address. So, oh, and here it is. So, in the, so this is what my team was hired to look at on this single site, and these issues run the gamut from increasing the opportunities to interpret the natural environment, to implementing new transportation strategies to encourage alternative vehicles and modes of transportation and access to the park, to improving safety for pedestrians and visitors to the park, to dealing with the overflow traffic and the overflow parking and the issues both from a safety and litter and community experience. So, and you, and the boatyard, I mean, the boatyard is on that, and it is an issue that has been front and center from the very beginning. But it, it's one of, as you can see, numerous issues that our team tried to address. And that's the plan that was shown earlier, that it took a while to get to this point, and I'll try to explain the specifics of the plan, if you can bear with me. I may jump around a little bit as, as I point out different things because I'm going to, I'm going to try to, rather than look at the plan from starting point to the end, I'm going to look at it as categories. So, one of the issues was to look at the increasing the capacity and the visitor experience and providing visitors to Glen County and St. Simon's with the, the best possible facilities. And so that's what we've tried to do with this plan. We've tried, one of the things that we have done is we've reached out to other managers of similar parks on, in similar situations, both county-run, city-run, federal parks, state parks that are in beach environments, and, you know, ask them a variety of questions, what works well, what doesn't work well? If you were going to redesign a park for the 21st century, what would you include? What would you exclude? If you could rebuild your park, what things would you do differently? And so a lot of that input kind of shows up in our plans. So, for example, providing as much parking is, is, is always near the top of the list. Providing shade is always at the top of their list. Providing areas for people to rinse off, inadequate bathrooms, you know, always seems to show up again and again in the conversations that we have with other park managers. In the RFP that we responded to, and in the conversations that we had, both with the community and with the steering committees, parking was at the forefront of this process. There is a number of days during the year, in fact, it's already begun apparently, when the parking lot exceeds current capacity and cars begin to flow into adjacent neighborhoods, parking in the right of way. And so we were asked to try to maximize parking, so in a way that was environmentally responsible and still could create an aesthetically interesting place. So, we began, you know, looking at what we felt like the maximum yield could be, and then, and which was around 350 or so cars. And then began to kind of peel back from that in order to allow for, you know, internal landscape strips, to allow for sidewalks, to provide for trailer parking and large vehicle parking. And there were some restrictions on the site that, that made, well, one, you know, maximizing parking seemed unnecessary, but then there were other kind of design elements that we wanted to include that related to other elements of the design and, and the challenges, which I'll get to in a second. The next thing was another strategy, and, and I should mention, in, in your packet, there are also some drafts of transportation studies and some kind of larger, more holistic approaches to addressing the parking issue. So it can't be solved simply by building parking spaces, there has to be other parking strategies and transportation strategies employed, and those would include shuttle systems, off-site parking spaces, and, as I mentioned earlier, encouraging more pedestrian and bike trans, access to the site. And so we've tried to accommodate bike, golf cart, as well as pedestrian. You know, you all are aware of, of the roundabout being considered for the intersection, and so we've tried to allow pedestrians and bikes and golf carts to be able to enter the site at two locations with clearly marked paths, that are clearly signed, and then lead towards designated parking areas for both bikes and golf carts. Part of that transportation draft that you have also discusses the need to have perhaps parking management on those most busy days. That was another lesson learned from other park managers is how being able to flag people into si, into parking spaces helps reduce the backup of traffic. But I think that, as you all are well aware of, one of the problems with the current lot is the fact that it's unlined, and so there's a lot of waste and inefficiency in the current parking system. So trying to increase just overall efficiency of, of this parking lot was part of our goal. Now, pedestrian access, you know, we went through multiple iterations, in fact, several that were similar to what the Surf Sailors Group presented earlier. And so, one of the things that the steering committee kept coming back to was this desire to create mul, multiple pedestrian access points to the beach to help distribute and, and facilitate access to the beach, whereas, you know, currently there's really one primary access and then a secondary access down on the south corner of the lot. And we showed a concept about midway through the design process that had these two terminal drop-off points that are, the, the southern one is, is sized appropriately for an emergency vehicle because that was from early in the design process thought to be the best location for the lifesaving operations. And so if we could, you know, improve the ability for emergency vehicles to get into that location in the case of an emergency or, or, or an event. And so that actually ended up driving part of this new, you can see this new entrance road that actually helps kind of direct the primary route of traffic down to that southern entrance, and all of the radii have been designed and curves have been designed in order to accommodate emergency vehicles. But having those second, there's two pedestrian points was thought to be a good design idea, helped distribute people across the site and, and, and gave you kind of two opportunities to create a special experience for this park. And then connecting the two pedestrian points was a new area where plazas and shade structures, a new bath facility with concessions and other support buildings, as well as a relocated volleyball center. All of that was to be relocated into that open space currently occupied by the boatyard. And then at the terminus of the walkways to the beach was an area for washing off, for visitors to be able to change out of their beach clothes before they got back into their car and drove back to the mainland. Other features shown on the map include dedicated areas for bicycles and bicycle stations. The other thing that, that was very important to the steering committee throughout the process was to, in, to, to try to not only preserve the existing natural environment, but to search for opportunities to improve the landscaping, but also the, for lack of a better phrase, ecological functions of the site. And that, there, there's two parts to that. One, there was a desire to make sure that the, the parking lot was as environmentally friendly and as permeable as possible. Secondly, there was a concern about ongoing flooding that takes place at this site and the threat that it has posed in the past to adjacent property owners. And so we tried to address that in a couple of different ways. One, by both preserving the Oak Grove, which is currently east of the bath house, and then tried to find opportunities to create new spaces where we can have dunescapes, and then also providing areas for bioinfiltration of stormwater, the onsite detention of stormwater, the filtering of any stormwater, so that when water does leave the site, it's cleaner, it's slower, it's controlled. In fact, a couple of things that we discovered in the existing conditions phase of this project back last fall was we, there was, there were two things that we heard initially from the public. One, they thought that the parking lot was fine the way it is because it was sand and it was the best surface for the site. And secondly, there was an opposition to paving the site, which I agree with, because of the amount of heat that asphalt produces. So, one, we did hydrology tests on the current surface and found that, in fact, because of about a six-inch layer of crushed and compacted lime rock, there was very little permeability to the existing parking lot, and in order to accomplish the goals of creating a porous parking lot, we needed to rethink and, and actually create a permeable system. Secondly, the heat analysis that we did, that's included in yours, shows that in the summertime, all surfaces are hot. I mean, from the sand to the asphalt to the concrete to the wood boardwalk, I mean, everything is measuring between... is measuring between 115 and 130 degrees in the sun. However, you can take that same material and take a measurement in the shade, and it drops down to 83, 85 degrees. So, the best way to make a parking lot cooler is not to necessarily change the material, it's to increase the amount of shade. And so, we've tried to do that. We'd like to do more, but we've tried to, you know, pull out parking spaces and replace them with trees. We tried to, whenever opportunity was, to create landscape strips for trees. The other thing that we were asked to do was to look at pedestrian safety, and I mentioned earlier that, you know, it's a very complicated site. There are things happening off-site, like off-street parking, people riding their bikes from the village or across the causeway. Some things that we had to be aware of and we had to consider, but we weren't necessarily dealing specifically in this project, but we had to, we had to collect people from adjacent neighborhoods, we had to try to collect people from the causeway and from the village and get them through the site safely. And so, we accomplished that by, one, creating a very prominent pedestrian boulevard that ran on access from the museum that would help collect the majority of the pedestrians to the site. And then, secondly, provided kind of crosswalks and speed bumps that would help direct people to the primary accesses and help slow down traffic. What other safety issues there are, I'm sure there are plenty more, but as you all know, the current situation is pretty chaotic, both within the park and then, in particular, outside of the park, when you have people kind of parking and encroaching upon the intersections. Lastly, and not lastly, but next, the design committee asked us to look at this site as a blank slate and really kind of think about what the best practices would be, and to be, you know, unencumbered by, you know, existing conditions. Now, I say that, you know, what our firm does, what we specialize in, is working in historic sites and environmentally sensitive sites. And so, we approach any project, you know, trying to be respectful of both the history and the ecology of the place. But this was a particularly exciting plan because it were project, because it was not a historic preservation project. We did, you know, we played with ideas that made changes to some of the geometry of the Coast Guard site, but we rejected those because we felt like it wasn't being true to the history of the site. We also were asked to really think about how to make this the greatest place for a visitor and a greatest place for a resident who would use this on a daily basis. And that's what prompted us to not only talk to people in the community about what you want and what you need, but also talk to other managers of similar parks around the country and find out, you know, for example, you know, volleyball. Volleyball was not high on my list coming into this project. I don't play beach volleyball. But talking to park managers, it's a facility that gets used. So, you know, so in our concepts, there were times that a beach volleyball got pulled out, times that they got put back in based upon space availability, but it ended up back in in this final concept. You know, the same goes with the boatyard. You know, from the very beginning, I've advocated with the design committee that having boat access is an important characteristic of this site. And so, you know, we went through many different designs with different numbers of boats and different locations, and through the filtering process, this is where we landed. But also, creating a good positive connection in all of this with the three components of the site, or four components of the site, which include the salt marsh, the museum, the parking lot, and the beach. So, trying to connect all of these in a way that makes sense, that serves a variety of people depending upon the purpose of their visit. You know, most of the people are coming to see the beach, but there are going to be people who come to the museum and trying to figure out how do we accommodate each of those visitors. So, our goal was to create the most attractive place possible that provided the most exceptional experience possible by providing the, you know, the details that would help a visitor to St. Simon's in Glen County enjoy the beach and leave with a positive experience. So, everything from rent stations to dog watering, to bus drop-offs, to trash and recycling, all of those have been considered and dealt with and addressed in our plan. So, I'm going to turn it over to Scott.
All right. Thank you, Keys, for sharing your insights with us. It's certainly been helpful and been a great journey. You've worked really hard on behalf of the community and listening to a lot of people, so I think that's important. And I only have two slides here today, and then I'm going to wrap it up and try to tie this all up in a knot for you, if at all possible, but funding and management was brought up. As several of the commissioners already know, the CVB has undertaken a separate study to identify different funding options that do not burden taxpayers, although at one time, the county had budgeted some significant park improvement monies there for drainage and ADA access. They were basically kind of put on hold until we figured out where we were going, and we thought that was a perfect opportunity for the master plan processes to look at this holistically versus ad hoc repairs. So, the hope that a lot of these things will actually be funded by not burdening the local taxpayers. The final design implementation plan will include management, maintenance, and funding strategies, and the concept designed is hoped to be financially sustainable as well. And the request before you today is to move forward to a final conceptual design and to complete our construction drawings and return to the commissioners with estimated costs, funding options, and management recommendations. And that concludes our slideshow. I will just add briefly, since I'm here quite often before you, it certainly, as you can see, this is a very difficult process. If I go back to, you know, trying to solve all these problems, there are many, many different issues, and this is a very compact area. I always look to what we can agree upon, and certainly, and as you heard the Surf Sailors say, many of the issues that we discussed are issues that we'd all like to fix. I think we're here today before you because we're in a situation, particularly with a consultant, is how do we get past how many spaces, what is the appropriate place or spaces for sailing? That primarily is your issue. That's what we've run into, and, you know, we, certainly, I've had many personal conversations with many of the Surf Sailors, and it's our hope that we could find something that would work for everyone. And although I have a great idea to buy another acre of land, that is not probably on the realistic table of consideration, but it's really, we've come to you looking for feedback of how can we move this process forward. So, we're respectful of Keys' time and cost to not to continue to draw plans, to move the process along and get us to where we need to go. So, that's how we'll conclude our process.
I'm looking for some direction.
Let me ask a question before we head in that direction. Couple comments, and, you know, I have been involved since I heard there was a consideration of a complete relook at the way the Coast Guard Park presents itself, handles itself, appears, functions. And one of the things I was struck with is there are multiple little pockets of money set aside for drainage by the Coast Guard Building, for the wooden beach crossover. These were considerable amounts of money. And my hope, trying to be fiscally responsible, is that we don't go in and redo the beach, the wooden beach walkover, I don't know how many hundreds of thousands of dollars that money is in, put in the, let's take a more comprehensive look at it. And, you know, I think, I think the process has moved along quite well, and I'm terribly impressed with Keys' attention to the details. And I've had town hall meetings over on the island for multiple reasons, one of which was to take a look at this, not the full meeting, but part of the meeting, and it was interesting, I think I said probably four times that the parking would be permeable. And I also said, okay, it's going to be 7:30, one more question. And a lady stood up and said, I can't believe you want to pave that parking lot, you know? I mean, I don't know what to do, but it will be permeable, right? And what we have now that looks beachy and sandy and very inviting is what? Not permeable entirely? Okay. Just to clear that up. Secondly, Keys did not emphasize this, but I think it's terribly important, when you go over there at busy times, our bathrooms are undersized. There's nothing worse, women probably have the problem more often than men do of waiting in line, but to wait in line while somebody's cleaning the bathroom, you simply can't do that over there with the size of the bathrooms. We have a very, very attentive public works department that does fantastic jobs, but they're just not able to shut down the restroom and have everybody stand outside and wait while they clean it because it's not big enough to shut half of it down. So, the way this is designed is build a bigger, area restroom for both the men and the women, so half can be closed at one time to clean and then flip it over. So, that's one of the examples of Keys' attention to detail. And, you know, I get the sense that several of my colleagues here want this to go forward, but in a spirit of cooperation. And, you know, I just don't want there to be any misunderstanding about the characterization of the willingness to work together. Have you been unwilling to work with the Surf Sailors, Sherry, Scott, Keys? Okay.
In fact, I set up a meeting with Dr. Malcolm Wright and Robert Ursery.
Could you get up to the microphone, please?
Yes, as I believe Dr. Wright contacted me right after the news article I showed you that we were, the master plan was approved, and we talked over the summer, me keeping him up to date on when the planner would be in place, because he wanted to have the opportunity to speak to him firsthand directly. So, we went back and forth. Dr. Wright went out of town for a month for vacation in August. I said, call me the minute you get back and I'll set up the meeting. And on October 4th, Keys met Robert Ursery and Dr. Malcolm Wright at the boatyard and had, I believe, quite an extensive meeting. And there are a lot of other examples of that. I think the distinction is they have not been involved on the design committee. They have had, in my view, lots of access to all of us and to the plan. In fact, this new version that you see here came out of a conversation between Scott and Jeff Betts just last week. And the space, they had mentioned earlier that that space did not accommodate the 35 boats that we've mentioned. It actually does because through Jeff, we learned about a boat stacking system, so you can stack sailboats to...
Please, 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 please. Look, look, look. The other thing is, everybody was entirely polite and courteous and cordial while you all presented your position. Nobody interrupted. So, offer these people the same courtesy, please. What were you saying?
I was saying that Jeff Betts met recently with Scott and explained, they had a very detailed meeting about how to accommodate sailing. And the way we're looking at it, there's sailing access for people to drop off their boats and use the site, there's sailing storage, and then there's the social club aspect of the Surf Sailors Group. And this plan accommodates wide public access, much wider than we have now, because there's room at Number Nine for large vehicle parking. That drop-off, the second public beach access point, will be big enough to take a trailer around. So, people can drop off much easier than they can now. The storage act aspect was actually only added last week because of the conversation with Jeff and what he was able to contribute to the design process. We got our design review group together again. These people have been so diligent over the last year, it is amazing their commitment to this project and really producing something that Glen County could be proud of. We called them back again to the table last week. We asked them to please review this last change, which was adding 35 spaces of boat storage, and they said a half was 17. Well, that's because you can double it with the stacking system. We got them, we got all back to the table last week. We talked them through, we talked about the conversation Scott had had, he shared that with the group, and everyone unanimously agreed that this was the right thing to do. This was a compromise. It was the number of spaces they had, that Jeff had told us they actually used. We are providing much wider public access. The only thing we haven't been able to preserve in this, on this site, is the club. It doesn't mean it can't be located somewhere else, but this site has got a lot of competing uses, and as you've heard, is a very complex situation that needs to be dealt with in a comprehensive way. So, that is my experience over the last couple of weeks. We were very proud to be able to share this today. In fact, Scott called Jeff and let him know that we had posted this on the website so he would know it was there, because we were trying to avoid any sort of confrontation at today's meeting, and we were really hopeful that this plan would do that. And so, thank you.
I've got some comments here. I go back to when this was originally proposed a couple of years back, and it started out all about the drainage. And then, we had the issue about the pervious material. We had the issue about the dust. But what I'm seeing here is, we changed from that, obviously, that got downplayed, and then we changed from that to redoing the Coast Guard Station and making a museum out of it. Okay? And you can all see, the Coast Guard Station as a museum, in my opinion, is, you're not going to have all these 300 people out here going to the museum, in other words. Okay? The museum is what is the attraction here for what it is in that spot, okay? Now, the rest of this over here, and keep in mind, I've been, I was born right here. We partied in this parking lot when I was in high school, okay, many times. And this is one of the last natural areas, if you will, that we have in Glen County. And we only have two. We've only got this one in Massengale, over on St. Simon's Island, the big town. There's always been, there's always been some heavy discussion about the 30 acres there, that's right on the beach. What's next? I mean, or if we go into something like this, what's going to be the next project is we start infiltrating into the 30 acres of natural area there between the housing and the beach. It's been there forever, and it is what it is. And once you do away with it, it's gone, it will never be back. That's what I'm seeing here. When you start extending this down, what is your, what is your, what is your goal here? Do we want more people on St. Simon's Island? Do we want more people in the parking lot at the Coast Guard Station? Is... Is, what's the goal? To attract, I mean, this night, there's no question about it. But taking the natural habitat away from the entire picture here, there's nothing, there's nothing wrong with the way it is. If you've got a dust problem, and I believe I floated into, floated into the paper, you woke up in the middle of the night with dust going all over the museum, well, you don't go do this to take care of a dust problem. You don't go do this to take care of a drainage problem. Now, in previous facts about this area, the drainage is on the north side of that parking lot. Would you please put that back up? The drainage is on the north side of that parking lot right there. There's a natural drain where it drops down and it goes under Bruce Drive into that little creek. Now, that's been a proven fact simply by the white runoff from the rock where the water has actually drained that way. But it only drains to a certain extent, because the thing has never been truly surveyed and landscaped or skated like it should be. So with very little effort, in my mind, you could come in and put field drain in that stuff, take that water where its natural flow is, let it go into a natural flow and into a natural flow creek down there. And you don't have to worry about drainage buildup down here. The reason you've got water buildup down here on the south end of this thing is because you've got a lush spot compared to the other end. Now, I'm no engineer by any means, but I've been visiting this thing all my life, and you've always had a mud puddle down here. But there's a reason for that. Pervious material, what you've got out there now, that's not the ideal stuff to put down there. That parking lot could be turned with a plow. You could put in field drain in that thing, come back and roll it and put some other type of material on top. And you've got natural drainage. But, and coming down here and infiltrating into the natural part of the beach and the dunes and, you know, taking the sailors' club out, it's been there every day. When's it going to stop? That's my question. I'll refer back to a perfect example with the jail. When's it going to stop? We're just going to take another block, and we're going to take another block, and we're going to take another block? Or what we're going to do here? We're just going to take another acre, and another acre, and another acre? This is not Miami Beach. This is not Hilton Head. And the more space you provide, the more people you're going to get. What's it going to be another ten years from now? You're going to have the same problem. You've got three hundred and three parking places, you're going to have six hundred people show up. But how is the Glen County taxpayer going to be affected by this? How are the people that have to put up with this day in and day out, when we do have the overflow days, when we do have the days that you've got three times as many people as that area right there a hole? We're not doing this for everyday things. We're doing this for a few days out of the year that attract an over-capacity of folks here. What is this going to do for our tourism? Nothing. You're going to have the same people. You think people are going to come to St. Simon's Island because you've got a nice parking lot on the beach? No. You think people are going to come over here and park there because you've got a museum right there? They're not going to go see the museum, they're not going to leave. If they don't come to the beach, they don't come to the beach. But as far as, y'all going in here and tearing all this stuff up, I was real surprised when you came the first time and presented to us, and we gave y'all to go ahead and fix this thing up and bring back and show us what you've got. But this right here is getting nothing done for the Coast Guard Beach Parking Lot. I mean, listen to me. I just don't see all this extra stuff down here. I don't know what, I mean, I see right here on number five where your entrance leg is, that very heavily resembles a tow roof. Not what you want to, but, okay? This is going to require maintenance, 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 and maintenance. And I'm here to tell you, what we've got over there right now, it has minimal maintenance, and it can be very well upgraded with very little effort. And let it control itself. Don't let us try to control it. You can only get so many eggs in a dozen egg baskets. Ain't going to hold thirteen, ain't going to hold fourteen, it's going to hold twelve. Use that same concept when you're talking about this right here. We don't need this. We don't need this. You've got more traffic down on East Beach and coming down those causeways and back and forth. I mean, what are you going to do when you add another two hundred and fifty people over this? Where are they going?
Yeah, I think you make some...
The space is not going to get any bigger.
You're exactly right.
You've just made it like it is.
Right, and you make some excellent points. And so I think what we've tried to do is stay within the existing footprint of what's developed and what's open. And so with the exception of that lower roundabout, with the exception of that lower roundabout, we haven't blown out anything. We've actually stayed within what is kind of open space, easy to improve. Secondly, I think what we're hoping to do is to, is to make the park more efficient. You're talking about more people coming, and you're exactly right. More people are coming that this parking lot can handle, and so they're flowing out into the neighborhoods north and south of here. So if we can reduce the number of cars that are flowing out into the neighborhoods by having more spaces in the parking lot, and then, you know, you're right in that one thing isn't going to solve it, it's going to take more than one thing. And so having a larger, you know, parking management plan, which is provided in that booklet that you have, helps to spell out two, three, four things that can take place to really help and prevent, help the parking and prevent the overflow into the neighborhoods. You're also, you make a good point about the weird hydrology on this site, and you do have water flowing north out of there. And then eventually, the way that it is currently engineered is that it all comes back in ponds and it's sitting. And if you go over there now, a lot of those oak trees and juniper trees that are north of the site are dying because the ground is staying saturated for so long. So what we had planned in this project was to divert all of the water to interior vegetated swales and then connect them and overflow into a filtering swale before any of the water actually makes it into the marsh. Because currently, all of the water that goes into this area flows through the salt marsh and then flows into the, flows into the pocket marsh and then into the salt marsh. And on heavy rain days, you can see that white stuff, which is lime rock, which is not good for that pocket marsh. You can actually see it migrating down through there. So, you know, I agree with you. And so what we had intended with our plan is to actually hold most of the water on site, cool it, clean it, and release it as slowly as possible. And just to reiterate, we're not blowing out the stuff. And that's one of the reasons that when we were, you know, asked to put in facilities, we identified the boatyard as, because it's open ground, as one of the best, most developable locations on this site. It does not require the removal of trees, for example. So that's, I don't know if I got all your points, but that was...
You build it and tap on number one, okay? You big it, they'll say, you build it and they'll come. You expand it and they'll come. And you're going to have more and more and more people and traffic on St. Simon's Island, and that is our biggest problem right now on St. Simon's Island. We don't want any more traffic on St. Simon's Island, folks. You can't accommodate what you've got. And you're building something here, an attraction, that, nobody said anything about increasing toll or paying a parking fee or nothing. Just do it. And once you put them buildings on county property, it belongs to the county. Okay? And then the next hurricane comes along, blows them away, the county's got to fork out the money to get them rebuilt. So there's a lot of stuff here that you, I don't think any of y'all have covered, when you get down to the brass tacks of this thing. You're just making a bigger stadium, if you will, okay? But how much bigger are you going to get? I mean, you, this is it. The only thing left is the natural foliage down in front of the East Beach Reservoirs down there. I mean, that's next.
We were...
I just don't see it at all. I'm sorry.
We were guided by the county's strategic plan, which calls for an improved quality of life for the citizens of this county, for planned and managed growth, for a safer environment. All those issues are real things on this site. There are many challenging issues. And the work that Key's has done has made it clear to us how serious those issues are. And the group that's been involved and all the people we've talked to, the reasons we spoke to them is to learn more about the site. And I know some of those reports are long, but they're in, they're in your book and they, in the briefing book, and they explain in a lot of detail about the dysfunction of this place. And it is already, we've already, it is our primary beach access. So we were very focused on quality of life for the residents of Glen County and improving public access. We, the visitors are different, kind of different discussion, and the museum came into this, the reason that the Historical Society became involved, is because since the last plan that failed, we made a commitment as an organization to spend a significant sum of money on this new project. And it has been tremendously well-received. We raised three point six million dollars in a little over a year. The community is extremely supportive of this new museum. And in order for that museum to operate and be an integral part of the area, we felt that it, where are the school buses going to go? Where are schoolchildren going to go? There are all kinds of issues that have been fed into this process that can be tackled through a comprehensive plan.
I think this is clearly intended for the greater good of the county. I hope they agree. I also appreciate the passion of the Surf Sailors. The, I've sailed twice, the first and the last time I was rescued at Acapulco Bay by the Mexican Coast Guard. I swore the Lord I'd never do that again if he'd just get me back home. But, Key, is there, is there an opportunity on number eighteen for some limited negotiation with the Surf Sailors?
Always.
Okay.
To follow up with the chairman, what, up there in twenty, the changing station?
Yes, sir.
That place looks relatively large. What is the necessity of a changing station that big?
Okay, they're five by five little, just rooms with no tops. So it's a place for a mom or a kid to go in and change their bathing suits. So it's a pretty simple site, and out in front of it would be rinse stations and shower stations and dog watering stations. So that, if graphically it's not reading correctly, that's what's included in those areas.
Think something like that could be moved over and accommodated in thirteen?
Twenty-one, you move to thirteen?
Sure.
I think the thought process behind their location was to capture people right off the beach. One of the things that, the gentleman that currently maintains the site, he was talking about, you know, how, you know, people track dirt into the bathrooms and that in the summertime, it just becomes all muddy and it's difficult, and then people complain about the dirt into the bathroom. So one of the things that is becoming relatively standard and best practices at parks like this is to have people, have the rinse stations closer to the end of the boardwalk or the access to the beach, so that the sand stays down there, the sand doesn't go all the way into your facility, because that just becomes a maintenance issue. So that was the thought process behind its location.
Is that parking, thirteen, in the front there, is that parking, are those parking spaces?
No, sir. Thirteen, no, sir. That's an overhead shade arbor.
Oh. Have we considered taking twenty-three, turn around and shifting it northward, shifting it up, so the Surf Sailors can come all the way out? Their plan, their plan looks to me like they're coming from the bottom here, they're going to square. If you shift that upward, more towards your, I guess those are the new restrooms and shops?
Right. Yes, sir. We...
You have all that space, green space behind it. You're talking about pavilions and picnicking and all that. Well, wouldn't that be the place to put it? Shift the roundabout up, give the Surf Sailors more room, a little more access there, more parking spaces, and you still have the same design. Are you going to just shift that up, take a little bit of this in between away, get all that dead space behind it, which is kind of sitting there?
Well, I mean, all good ideas.
Yeah, twenty-three, shifting it this way, and then shifting everything up that way more towards the bathroom and that, and give the Surf Sailors more of the space down below.
It's a great idea. Again, I'm just going to tell you our thought process. That area, that dead space behind number thirteen, that's this pretty awesome grove of oak trees that we were trying really our best to protect, because it offers really right now the only shade on that site. And we saw that as an opportunity to have like a picnic grove and a place for kids to play and, you know, clean it up and make it nice, but not take those...
I'm not talking about doing away with it. What I'm saying is, if you take this and shift this entrance up here, you leave this alone, you're not going to touch this. You just shift this up so that your circle gets closer, how much space does that open up down here for the Salem Club to have access to? You've got them here, you've got a bunch of trees, I suppose, here, okay? Which is a new buffer, it says, so there may be some parking available in there, but run them all the way out here and just shift this up. Because you've got this space, I'm not sure, these items here, fourteen, your pavilion, okay, well, shift it up. Just shift the pavilion up. I don't know what this is. Is that another pavilion?
Bicycle parking.
Bicycle parking?
Yeah.
Is that here or here?
It's where your cannon is.
Okay. Now, I'm saying, if that just shifts up a little bit, I'm not talking about clear cut there.
Right. No, no, and I agree with you. But from a design standpoint, what has been the most difficult, challenging aspect of it is trying to get a total of four complete automobile parking bays. And when you start moving a travel lane either north or south on this plan, it, the major ripple effect comes from parking. It's not pedestrian. And so what I'm saying is that, you make all good ideas.
The other thing I would say, you know, from our design standpoint with the way that the current configuration is, that that roundabout was a flush curved roundabout where, you know, it would be easy to get boats and pedestrians to walk. So it wasn't an impediment to people walking or rolling a boat or a bicycle. But again, from a design, and we can show you the different iterations, but once you start moving travel lanes north and south...
I'm not talking about moving the travel lane. You have an entrance right here. I think it's green. That says grass to me. What I'm saying is, you come down here, you put your entrance here instead of here. Move difference from here to here, because this is green now. Your circle comes up and it gets closer here. I don't know how much it'll open up, because scale-wise, I don't know how much acreage that is or what that is, but that's what I'm, that's what I'm talking about. I'm not talking about shifting the entire road. I'm not just putting your entrance, you're putting an entrance in there. You already have a road coming through, and it looks to me like the road, it stops, you can't get through there. I don't know how that's designed, the way it's drawn, but if you just shift that entrance up and the whole thing shifts up, it opens more space down below.
From my point of view, contrary to what one of my fellow commissioners said, I think it's a great idea. I think it would certainly benefit Glen County. But I'd also like to accommodate Surf Sailors. But I'd also like to accommodate surf sailors. So, if there was some way that we could provide, let's say, thirty-five spaces. Now, I don't know if that's something that they would live with or not, you know? But, at least it gives them, you know, still part of their, their, what they're trying to accomplish there and about doubles what they now have. And so, I think, I for one, I, I could live with that if you could do something like that. And I think that's the same thing Commissioner Stanbrough talked about.
You know, and, and I want to add too, you know, we talked about, uh, what the Sherri and Hergrids are gonna do and what the surf sailors are wanting to do. But I got a lot of emails from folks that are only concerned about going to the beach and what's happening on this east end. You know, a lot of them, probably goes back to what Bob said. I don't want to characterize your words, but I may just do it here in a minute, but, but, you know, there's a certain character that's been there for so long and, a, as there is all across that island. And people are all about upsetting the character as, as they're accustomed to it, used to it. And, and what I see here on this east end does, you know, try and address and accommodate all kinds of different folks, most of them patients, different uses and all that. You check off all the boxes and you got it. But, it seems to me that it's just getting a little too complicated on this east end. And, uh, so, you know, maybe rethink. Get down with the, hey, Collins?
Well, Commissioner, uh, thank you for your comments. I, I think that's really the reason we're here today is, um, you know, and I just want to reiterate that we're trying to find a solution. And I'm, you know, I, I congratulate the surf sailors too for working on a plan to try to find a solution and all those that I've had a conversation with. I don't think we're, I'm not here in conflict, meaning with the surf sailors. I, I think the group decided to bring it before you is, we didn't feel comfortable making that decision of how many spaces are appropriate, what's appropriate. It's, it's complex, as I think everyone sees. So, what we're, we've tried to bring it before you in a public setting is to really just see which way that the commissioners would like us to go with this. I hear some saying, find a solution over here, find space over here. I'm not sure where everyone else is, but we need your clear direction. Because I don't think we'd be here. I, I think most people can agree in the room if it, if it weren't about sailing. And, and, uh, that's what we're trying to resolve and we're, maybe not everyone, I understand that, but I, I look around the room and I see many sailors and many residents who participated in the variety of charades. And that was the thing that we just could not resolve. So, I, I, I hate to put the onus back on you, but in some ways it is of what would you like us to do to move forward? And that's what we're looking for you.
One other comment, and I want to go on record for this. If others tonight could go on record, but, but we need all the parking spaces we can get. And this will do that, and it is. But, for every action is reaction. And this action is to complement the museum and large park. And that museum's gonna draw more people. I really think it's gonna draw more people. What we're gonna find out is we still don't have parking, I mean, I mean, we're still gonna have a parking problem anyhow if we didn't have the museum. Even if you increase it, gain another sixty-seven parking spaces, it would, it would have parking problems. But, I believe the visitors to the museum alone, you know, they keep up these additional parking spaces, you know, for a lot of the time. Not all the time, it depends on when the business runs out. But, uh, I, I just said, we're gonna wake up one day and find that way. Add a bunch of parking spaces, but it's almost like we're so empty.
I think we've considered that. The, the museum does have twenty-eight spaces and, I mean, Sherri would know better than I, but I think that's more than adequate for what they need. It's truly about, you know, the, the recreational amenity. Commissioner, I, I'll leave it to you.
Let, let me make the recommendation. I mean, I guess it was easy everybody to be doing it. Why don't we, why don't we go back? Keys, why don't, why don't we go back and meet with the surf sailors? Come up with your best plan, bring it to the April fifth commission meeting, and we'll bug it up and down. Does that make any sense to anybody?
You want to do it for another workshop, you don't want to have another one.
No.
But, this is enough. But, understanding the surf sailors now, you've got to give, so.
Well, they have. I think the surf sailors have given.
And, and, yeah, but I mean, you know, you're not gonna be able to maintain a hundred and twenty-five spaces.
Uh, well, well, let me ask this. So, are we talking about renewing their lease at the same time? Because I have a, I have a problem with this.
No, 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 we, we want the lease rewritten. No, no. The lease gotta be rewritten, updated. Yeah. The, the lease is, you know, twenty or thirty years old since it was left.
You know, Robert, I don't know what market is. At some point, I mean, everything's down, go to market.
I think, I think my only comment on that is, we've probably made open costs for all Glen County residents in a certain way and a certain cost.
I got, I got, I got. We, it, it, it's very similar to the same thing I was about to say. We can't price you out of business, but at the same time, there's got to be a market element in this equation.
Chairman President, can I just ask one other thing? There's another inherent conflict. The surf sailors are a five oh one C seven, which is a social and recreational club. And it says in the tax codes, the guidelines make it clear that making club facilities available to the public for a fee is not a permissible activity. So, there's an inherent conflict with the way that they're organized to have, you know, to be tax exempt and being able to provide a public amenity. And I, I, I'm pers, I'm still struggling with that because we were trying to provide wide access to Glen County residents.
I think we've worked that out pretty easily.
Well, I'm not gonna support that.
Well, I mean, I don't think anybody is. So, do you think, uh, that's enough time, Keys, to, uh, come up with a, with a-
What's due again?
April fifth.
April fifth. It's basically two weeks away, Keys. We can, you know, we could accommodate you the first, first, you know, the month of February.
I would think, I, I, I would think you need a little more time. Keys, Keys is in a different place than I am and, yeah.
Well, I might, make it, make it the second meeting in April.
Okay, second meeting in April. You guys sit together, and if you can, we'll, we'll push it back.
Yep, we'll move it again.
I think it moves us to move this thing, to move it forward. Woo!
Okay, next slide.
So, second that.
That's the, the fifty years, this no different.
Yep, all right. Mr. Chairman? We're leaving. We're through. We're through.
Is there a water bucket somewhere? Is there water, uh?
Well, somebody else.
Yeah, no kidding.
Yeah.
Need to get my person.
Yeah. Hey.
Commissioner?
How you doing?
Good, how are you?
All right.
Let's make this very short, because you got a big meeting ahead.
Yeah.
Sir?
Yeah, last three? Yeah.
Everybody will stroll all the way to that.
I love, I love that report.
That was a tough one. Commissioner White here, it's good to see you again. I think everybody will be around here. I do too. We do. No, I'm on the design YouTube. I'm on the board of the historical side. And I've raised the money for the museum. We've got rings in it. I know, it's really gonna be neat. Good to see y'all.
Hey, hey, look, we're gonna be here till dark if we don't get our seats and get going. Hello? Could we have order in the courtroom? Hey, can everybody listen up? The meeting's fixing to start back. Will everybody have a seat?
Which, which ride? Who's riding?
Meeting's starting back. The meeting's fixing to start.
He's saying, sit down.
What is this about?
This is about dilapidated structures.
Here they are.
How long, how, how long is this gonna take?
Uh, I can, I can go through it as fast as I can.
Well, that is a question. Is it for politics?
Excuse me, can we have everyone sit down, please?
You know, the bad thing about it is that this, this text-
Oh, God, yeah.
I can't believe you said that in a good place. Was there, was there anything that was false in what I said?
All right, okay, here we go. Item, item number three, dilapidated structures presentation. Assistant County Attorney, Wilber.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I'm, I know we're short on time, so I'm gonna try to go through this as quickly as possible. If I go too fast, please tell me to stop. Um, so I'm gonna run you real quickly through our current process of how we deal with dilapidated structures. We're gonna propose, uh, a potential different process that would require y'all to adopt a set of ordinances. Um, we're gonna ask y'all for direction on that. And then we're also gonna talk about an alternative process on some of these properties where we hold tax deeds and try to get some feedback from y'all and direction on y'all, how y'all want us to proceed on those. So, uh, real quick, I'll try to go through our current process that we follow right now. Uh, the process starts with our fire marshal conducting an inspection of dilapidated structures, either ones that he himself is aware of or we get complaints about. He, he does an inspection, he prepares a report with his findings of the condition of the property. Our ordinance requires that a notice be sent to the owner. Uh, we go to G I S and find the owner of the property. They have, uh, we have to give them between fourteen and forty-five days to remedy the situation. Uh, if we do not get a response from them, then the, the file is sent to our office for processing. Um, from that point, we order a title, we review the file. Sometimes there's some stuff that needs to be fixed, we have to go back and fix a few things. But, uh, if everything's in order, then we order a title search. Uh, that can take up to two weeks in some cases, in some cases even longer, but one to two weeks is a good timeline for that normally. Uh, sometimes we get that title search back and it turns out that the person that's on the tax records is not the actual owner of the property, in which case, uh, we have to send that file back to the fire department so they can start over with the notice process, give that owner an opportunity to correct the problem before we file suit. Uh, if it turns out that the, uh, owner has already received notice, then we file a complaint in Superior Court. Uh, that process can take up to two to three weeks. We have to review the title search, find out everyone who's got an interest in the property, locate them, find out how we're gonna serve them, request checks from finance, do all that before we even get a chance to file the suit. Uh, once we file the suit, the persons named in there have at least thirty days to answer that complaint. And sometime, after that, we're, we're usually seeking a hearing from Superior Court to have a hearing on whether the person who owns the property should be, uh, required to tear down the property, and if they do not, then the county. That process can take up to about two months to get a hearing scheduled, uh, even longer sometimes if they file some defensive pleadings. In the vast majority of cases, if we go to court and get an order, it is, gives the person that owns the property a certain amount of time to demolish it. If they don't, it gives the county the opportunity to go there and demolish it, uh, itself. Before we do that, we come to y'all and get y'all to authorize us to demolish that piece of property. Once we do that, then we put a lien on the property for all costs that we have incurred, uh, including demolition, including attorney's fees, everything else. Uh, that timeline is, is pretty extended. Um, I, down here, the bottom of the, um, and I should've told you this in the beginning, but on the left-hand side is our current process, the, in red. Uh, typical timeline from inspection to getting a hearing, uh, is probably anywhere to a hundred and fifty to a hundred and eighty days. So, you're looking at five to six months. That's if we don't hit any major snags in that process along the way. State law, uh, has a nuisance abatement process that, uh, we follow somewhat, but not completely. Uh, and that's, uh, here in blue on, on the right side of your screen here. Um, rather than have the fire marshal go out, the building inspector would go and inspect the property. And they would make a determination, one, what life safety and, and other building codes are, is the building in violation of? Uh, and what is the proposed cost to bring the, that building up to code? State law says if that cost is not reasonable, then we can go and ask for that property to be demolished. So, the process, uh, after the building inspector determines the cost, uh, and, and this is taken in part by the way the city does theirs, they get a title search. They, they have the demolition coordinator get a title search. They prepare a package, deliver that to the attorney's office. Uh, at that point, we're much closer to being able to file suit than under the process we do now. In the, under that process, we would file a complaint, and at that point, you post a notice on the property and you put an ad in the paper saying, we filed suit against this property, we're seeking its demolition. Uh, one of the big differences between these two processes is this would go into magistrate court rather than Superior Court. And under this statute, the magistrate court must set a hearing, uh, no sooner than fourteen and no, uh, later than forty-five days after it's filed. Fourteen days is more for the emergency situations where something needs to come down ASAP. Forty-five is for the more typical situations where we've got a problem and we need it torn down, but it's not an emergency. So, um, in order to do this second process that's outlined in blue here, the county would need to adopt a set of ordinances that outlines this process, how it works, gives the building inspectors the ability to go onto property and conduct these inspections, and then let it- and then let us go through this process.
How long it takes to get the ordinances in place?
Uh, it should be fairly straightforward. I mean, uh, it's, you basically mirror state law, it's all laid out in a statute in state law. Uh, we could probably have it ready for y'all to consider within thirty days, I would think.
And I didn't mean to interrupt you, Will, but we need to do something. I, I've got property in my district, it's taken two or three years.
Yes, sir.
And it's, it's gotten to the point that we just got so many dilapidated, just uninhabitable houses in this county. It, it gets ridiculous, and it's in every district. So we need to do, and I'm just speaking for one commissioner, but we need to do whatever we can to streamline this process and get these places torn down, you know, do whatever we need to do.
I, I think this can streamline the process somewhat. I mean, uh, again, I've, I've been speaking a little bit to the city and their process, and, and it looks like they get from inspection to court within about a ninety to a hundred days. So we're already cutting off maybe a few, a couple months off the process.
I, I would Richard on, on, on that comment. The other thing I would also ask is to coordinate with the land bank. It's taken us a while to get everything set up with that, but land banks do have some avenues not available to the county. So we might, we need to kind of look at that process as well and see what we can coordinate that way, because maybe even quicker ways to do it through the land bank, but I mean, you're on the right track here with this. But I wouldn't like to look at that and see if the land bank at some point can become part of the process for, for the county, help them out.
That's a perfect segue into the next section of my presentation. So, um, before I move forward on that, though, uh, I think this other process could get us to, uh, uh, an order sooner. As some of y'all have sat down on this committee, uh, that we, periodic meetings we have know, these things are rarely straightforward. So a lot of times what happens is you get a title search, turns out someone died still owning the property, and then they never transferred the property out of their name, and you have to track down the heirs and things like that. That sort of stuff is, is really what a lot of times delays these things. Um, so this will streamline the process, but it's not gonna be the miracle cure-all to, to get us, uh, you know, where we probably would like to be. Um, but to Commissioner Stanbaugh's point, we have identified, uh, four properties on our, uh, current dilapidated structures list where the county holds tax deeds. So these are, uh, sales where no one bid at the tax sale, tax commissioner knocked them off to the county. We hold these tax deeds. There is a, a, a method under the state law where we can, uh, foreclose or bar the right of redemption on these tax deeds and become the owner of the property. So, uh, an owner at, uh, who, person who owns the property at the time of his tax sale has twelve months by right to come in and pay us what they owe to redeem the property. Uh, after that point, then the process what I've laid out here is, is what we could follow to foreclose that right of redemption. So, uh, first thing we would wanna do is do a title search. We'd identify the owner of the property and anybody else that has a record, uh, interest in the property, so lien holders, mortgages, anything like that. Um, then it's a fairly simple process from there. At least forty-five days before the deadline, we send them a notice that says you have until X date to pay us X amount of money to redeem the property. And if you don't do so, then your, uh, interest in the property is extinguished. If they live in the county, we have to have them personally served by the sheriff. If they live outside the county, then we send them a notice by certified mail. Uh, in addition to this, we have to publish a notice of foreclosure in the newspaper once a week for four weeks. And then at that point, it's a simple waiting game. If they pay us before the deadline, then we give them a quick claim deed. We have our money, they have their property back. If they don't, then the county, uh, becomes the owner of the property at that point. So, I'm gonna show you the four properties that we have here, and then again, we're asking for y'all's guidance. We've never done this before. To my knowledge, the county has never foreclosed on a tax deed. Um, I think we hold, I don't know how many hundreds of them probably. Um, most of them not on dilapidated structures, but these just so happened to coincide with our dilapidated structures list. So the first one I'm gonna talk about here is thirty-three oh-two Glen Avenue. Here's a G I S, uh, picture of this. Uh, this is the hotel that's on seventeen, uh, just, I guess it would be south of the, uh, where the spur comes in. Um, and the pictures of that are in your handout that was given to you by, uh, Captain Johnson. So this property is actually in the city, city limits, it's not in the county, but we do hold a tax deed on this property. So we've got this one, and we've got three others that the county holds tax deeds on. The other one, um, is one hundred Butts Road, which is on the, uh, screen in front of you now. So for reference, um, I don't know if you can see up here on the screen, this is the overpass community road. This is Old Jessup Road. Habersham is, uh, over here. And then the property we're talking about is directly behind the city public works department or, uh, area out there. Um, I think we have pictures of that one in your packet as well. Yeah, number four, and then these are two properties in our code that sit next to each other. Number, uh, seven and number nine, Tenth Street. Again, for, uh, reference, this is Norwich here, uh, Whitlock over here. Uh, we actually, five, seven, and nine, Tenth Street are on our dilapidated structures list, but we have tax deeds on seven and nine, Tenth Street. So, uh, again, we've got pictures of those in your packet. We could, uh, on these properties, rather than go through the traditional dilapidated structures process, we could either, one, foreclose the tax deeds ourselves and become the owners of the property and demolish the structures. Um, or as Commissioner Stanbaugh suggested, uh, these might be prime properties to transfer over to the land bank if that's what y'all so chose to do, uh, so that they could have some seed properties and, uh, they could have, as he said, a lot more flexibility on what to do with these properties than we do. If we foreclose on the property and become the owners and, and demolish the structures, then the only way the county can dispose of those properties are, uh, if we wanted to do a sale, we could do it by sealed bids or, um, an auction. Uh, if we had property to swap with another governmental entity or something like that, you could do those sorts of things. But the land bank does have a lot more opportunities to dispose of those properties than the county does. Um, just for a little bit of reference, um, on one hundred Butts Road, which is this property here behind the, uh, public work, the city public works, uh, the county has four tax deeds on that property. Uh, the total payoff for those four tax deeds would be five thousand fifty-six dollars. The tax, uh, the G I S records put the total value of that piece of property at seventy-three hundred dollars. Um, for seven, Tenth Street, uh, the county's tax deed is three thousand seven hundred seventy-five dollars. The, uh, fair market value, uh, according to G I S, is eleven thousand dollars. Um, and ninth, nine, Tenth Street, and I should've, uh, the one highlighted is seven, and then nine is right next to it there. Um, on that one, the county has a tax deed for three thousand three hundred ninety-eight dollars. Uh, property has a fair market value of ninety-three hundred dollars. So, uh, yeah, we're just asking for y'all's guidance on whether to move forward with that ordinance amendment and what to do, uh, if anything, uh, with the tax deeds on these properties.
You did, what's the value of the property on Glen Avenue?
Okay, uh, let's see, sorry. The tax deed held by the county, um, the payoff amount on that one is sixty-one thousand nine hundred twenty-two dollars. The fair market value according to G I S is four hundred ninety-six thousand five hundred dollars.
Well, when we, um, you know, I like, I like, I'm working with seven years going on. I mean, these properties are uninhabitable, but they are inhabited by the emphasis of everything that's bad in our community, drugs and, and whatever, labor and maintenance, bad stuff. And we, we need to get them eradicated. The property on Glen Avenue, um, I mean, there's a significant environmental issue that's gonna have to be dealt with. Uh, you know, I would not be a proponent of the county going in and taking something that's got a two hundred fifty thousand dollar, uh, look of that messes, it's got to be amated, uh, somehow.
Well. I don't mean to cut you off, but.
Go ahead.
Uh, well, um, I'm assuming all of these in my district, other than I'm not good on, but.
No, that's, that's in my.
Then your district, okay.
Yeah.
The, uh, yeah, on the hotel, I've, I've been working with the owner to try to get something done with the property. He is, um, um, in earnest, working on something, and, um, and so, uh, I would, uh, I would take that off the list. Are you talking about Glen Avenue? Yeah. But these other ones.
I, I would agree.
I wish to.
I would agree too.
Yeah, but we, we, we might spend more money than what we could worth. Right. Right. More value to the city and the county and supporting him in that effort.
Would you like to give me some guidance on that?
Uh, I've already done that.
Oh, really?
Yesterday. Said it needs to be done yesterday.
Well, I mean.
But, I mean, we, we can always, we still have. You can pull the trigger when you get ready. Yeah.
Yeah, that may, uh, I've, I've been involved in, uh, attending the condemnation meetings. Of course, that is a staff committee, and Commissioner Hohman, that I've been going with at least the last two years. Commissioner Russ has been going for the last two years, and, and the fire marshal's working on now condemnation process. It's a very long process, that hundred fifty, the hundred and eighty days is optimistic.
That's a number.
I mean, we're talking about, uh, stuff that I asked for almost per se. I come on the commission, a year, and, 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 and we got a great team, and did great work. But when you get into the title searches and notifications, and you think you got it all covered, you find out somebody else is out there that hasn't been notified, you back up a bunch, uh, it, it hurts, it kind of, it's. I like the building inspector approach, and I do for, I see, of course, mad and for that reason, we like to do that. And I'd, I could say, if you sit down and listen to me, we, we, we need to do that.
You gotta do something.
Yeah, we gotta do something. Uh, also, I will love this effort in that, uh, we have been tearing down some structure. So, you know, things started moving, we had been tearing any down, and so, it's like a good two years ago.
Mm-hmm.
And, and, and we got started back on.
Mm-hmm.
And, and Ford might notice that I think we only had twenty-five thousand dollars in the budget, and now we're up to like two hundred thousand on the debate, and that's been a good thing. So, uh, uh, but anyhow, uh, I wanna, I wanna suppose that we go with the, uh, building inspector route, and that we hold off on the hotel, I was already, I was agreeing with you, and we brought that up.
Yeah.
I feel like we need to hold, hold off on that. And, uh, the other structures. What about thirty-thirty Scarlet Street?
Commissioner, I think, uh, I think the fire marshal's gonna speak to that one. That, now that one, uh, just to be, yeah, right, that, that one, we don't have a tax deed on. That was still in the, uh, the, the process. Uh, seven and nine, Tenth Street and one hundred Butts Road.
Yeah, I, I totally agree. I, I do think, um, what Commissioner Stanbaugh was thinking about integrating with the, the land bank, because, uh, that was the purpose of it, and I think there's some things that may have been shorted, uh, the process even more so.
This, this, this other property out here, thirty-thirty Scarlet Street, that's a safety issue, and, and we need to, and stuff like that, I mean, that's costing, that's missed county jobs. These ladies that are working in that call center, um, they can't, I mean, they, they won't, they can't, because of the labor.
Where did you say?
Thirty-thirty Scarlet Street is.
Not the call center. Now, when you look out in front of the call center, you can look directly through that motel, 'cause there are no walls on either side of it. So, it, it, it's, uh, it needs to be, that is the matter.
The letters, Commissioner, I'll give you update. Both letters have came back to me, undeliverable, so paperwork will be, uh, sent to the county attorney to move forward with it.
Okay, good, thanks.
Good. Do, do we need, we need to vote on what, Commissioner Browning, or just, just direct staff to move forward with?
We were just looking for direction, we'll, we'll get to work, we'll, we'll prepare an ordinance for y'all to consider. I think I'm gonna take the same meeting that those folks did and, uh, try to do the second one. Uh, real quick, I, from what I'm hearing from the commissioners is on five and seven, I'm sorry, seven and nine, Tenth Street and one hundred Butts Road, um, maybe you want staff to reach out to the land bank, see if they're interested in taking those properties? Yes, sir.
Yes, absolutely, yeah.
What was your comment a minute ago about the, the call?
No, not that one, that one on Glen Avenue. Right, the one on. The one on Glen Avenue.
About the hotel?
Yeah, the two hotels.
Two of them.
Right, the second one is Scarlet.
It's up in the call center, uh.
Right.
Off three forty-one?
Yeah.
Behind another motel.
Mr. Cohen, take that to the old.
Is it over there behind where that place burned? The, the.
No, 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 the other side of the road. It's on the, it's on the north side of three forty-one, before you get to the interstate.
The old Shoney's.
On the right, the old Shoney's, and, and, and behind there.
And then, then the one that you're talking about that's, um, so what are we looking to do with this?
So, thirty-third Scarlet Street, we're moving forward for legal action. Repeating those letters, there's a dent, and I've got some limited process, and we can do it for y'all, for y'all to know what we're looking at to tear down.
Okay, would this also be something for the land bank to look at, you think?
We won't know until we have a, uh, so the land bank, the only ones we can transfer to the land bank.
You gotta have a tax deed.
Right, we have to have a tax deed, we don't know.
You don't have a tax deed on this, though.
We haven't explored the title on this one to see if we have a tax deed.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Keep, keep on, keep it on there. Alright, number four, renovations in the tax commissioner's office, Commissioner Browning, I think you're. Now, I was, uh, interested on the Star, and was going to see an email, and it kind of been around about and George, and then the tax commissioner's office, and, and I was really interested in it, because, I know we had that learning that I was led to. It was the tax commissioner's office, so how they, what's he watching, or for what, yeah, getting what I'd like for, I think, this. Cat included, and I like when he still learned, it's good, and, and, um, we were answering about what's going on with it, um.
Well, I came here today really to observe. I got the email that you had added to the agenda. I know there's been, uh, some legal actions filed, and so I just came as a courtesy to hear. Was streaming it down in my office, the meeting, which is real nice, uh, to be able to watch it and come in at the last minute, but I'm not prepared to really answer questions. If you have specific questions you'd like to put in writing, I'd be happy to try to address them. I, I will say this, though, every day that no action is taken regarding following through and resolving this issue endangers my staff and the public, uh, with the project being unfinished along with some other issues, uh, in the overarching construction of, and renovation that we initiated. So, you know, be, feel free to, to tally up the questions, and I'll do my best to answer them, uh, in, in a timely fashion.
Well, Commissioner Chapman, with all due respect, uh, since you threw that out, and you're telling me I should, I should write my questions in, uh, I'm even more determined to ask you some questions.
Okay, well, like I said, I'm, I'm here, uh.
I was hoping to have a conversation that you threw the questions, to try to get, so I, 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 I don't understand why we here, because it seems to me that we have someone that took it on their own and goes and the money, that they didn't have the imagination. And, 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 and to go and take, take, to make modifications to a building that they have no control of, okay? And the taxpayers, I want the taxpayers to have answers to these questions, because I've never heard of this. I have never heard, I have never heard of somebody that's an elected official, and especially, you know, your prior, prior county.
I, I'm not gonna answer any questions, Mr. Commissioner Browning, so I'm gonna take my seat and let you tell the public what you think of the situation. I'm here to observe.
Well.
So, I'm taking my seat now, sir, thank you.
I don't know if there's any reason why you should. Let me, okay, well, let me lay this out. We all received emails that Commissioner Chapman has spent around sixty-five thousand dollars on renovations to this building, and he didn't have that money in his budget, we never authorized that money in his budget. And this building belongs to the taxpayers of Glen County, and has none of the control of the board of commissioners. The tax commissioner has no authority to change anything in this building without, without our consent. None. Absolutely none. Now, as a commissioner, I'm disturbed about what's happened. $65,000, okay. Do you have the total, Lieutenant? Manager? Okay, but as far as I know, it was spent, apparently, on three different, I don't know if you call them purchase orders, I don't know if you call them contracts, that were made out, the contractors that came into this building, and we have a process we go through when we did work out, whether it's plans, and plans thrown up, specifications are put to it, and the reason we do that is make sure we get the quality of construction, and that the construction, the safety that's built into that construction protects the people that's working in the area and the public that comes here. Now, I as a commissioner, I understand there was plumbing work, electrical work, if there's any structural work, I've not seen it. But this work was in progress.
May I, may I ask some questions, Commissioner Browning? I mean, it sounds like you're making a sound point. So, the, the process for getting this work done, it doesn't have to go through a sort of a permitting process, and so that they're inspected for whatever work is being done?
Yes, it is.
So, did, is that what happened?
Commissioner, I'm here to observe, I've been listening, and the next one is...
Okay, so you, so you're saying that we can only communicate unless it isn't written? Come on, come on, Tech, Commissioner, come on now. If, if that's how we're going to do this, that's not going to be a good working relationship here.
Well, that's what's important.
Big, so, you're saying that because you didn't follow this process, and that's what it sounds like, our process for remodeling, what just about, what all citizens have to go through, and that you're saying that now that you're just not going to answer any questions around it at all?
Well, if that's an answer question, is that model, or do you want to put them in writing? Yes.
Okay, so you're going to only communicate with us in writing? No emails, no, no phone calls, anything like that? You're not going to talk to any of us about anything, ever?
Let me just think, because, because, um, there's an illegal environment that this is falling into, so the staff, I mean, communicating...
Okay, well, you didn't say that at first, you just said you weren't answering any questions.
Today, no, I'm not going to answer any questions verbally today.
So, we have work that was done on this building that was not permitted or inspected. Bow to that.
We have work, and I understand it, I don't even know if an architect is employed. We don't know if an architect is employed. To do the same with this building, if an architect was employed, I'd like to have a copy of that contract, I'd like to have a copy of what he was supposed to provide. If he provided drawings, scope of work, specification for the work to be done by code and by law, I'd like to see that. Just bored to see that. I'd like to know who the contractors are that came into this building and their credentials. I want to know if they're properly licensed by the Georgia State Construction Industry License Board to do work in this building. I'd like to have their names, every contractor that came into this building and worked, and is now asking for payment from the tax commissioner that this board has not authorized in his budget. Now, I want the public to know that we authorized $300,000 last year in this current budget, and the commissioner's budget to perform the work that he wanted done through the process that we do with the county purchases, which wouldn't entail getting an architect, and getting plans and specifications thrown up, going out for bids, and doing it the way we do with other capital projects. We didn't do it, we didn't do it this way, we were not asked to do it. Money was just, money that was not in the tax commissioner's budget was being committed. Money that wasn't there was being committed.
So, constitutional officers, they can just decide to renovate their, their offices?
Our building, no, we cannot do it. It's our building, and we have to protect the integrity of the building and everything that goes on.
Any county building, anything that happens in it as far as renovation or change or anything else, has to be approved by the board of commissioners. And there is state law that upholds it. So, if it's not done properly and someone gets injured, who is liable?
Reg legal, the, the, the board of commissioners and the tax payer, the tax payer and the taxpayers. But we don't know what we're doing now. We don't know if the work was up the code, we don't know if the materials was up the end of specification, because it doesn't sound like there were any specifications issued to the contractors that came on board. There was wiring described, we don't know if the wiring is up the code, we don't know if the plumbing is up the code, we don't know these things. I, I think I know that we're being asked to transfer money from the board of commissioners' budget to the commission, to the tax commissioner's budget to pay these bills.
So, don't, don't, don't the sub have the full permits that they're doing something?
Well, that, that all needs to be, that all needs to be looked at. You know, this is, this is, you know, if the judge come over here and say he needed another courtroom space, and...
It's a start of guilt.
If he got a number of $500,000 to do it, we're not going to give the judge $500,000 to renovate one of our courthouses. The courthouse is going to us. The detention facility belongs to us, doesn't belong to the sheriff. All these government buildings belong to this board of commissioners and stewards for the taxpayers of Glen County. And we have a serious problem here, what's happening. I submit to you, we have a very serious problem. And before we transfer any money, I understand, I hadn't said anything, but I understand there's been a request, quest to transfer money from our budget to his budget to pay the contractors. We need to know what these contractors did in there. We need to know what is downstairs in the paint building. And I would even submit that we might need to call the attorney general and find out how to best handle the situation.
That would be my next...
$65,000 was spent on three purchase orders, and my guess is that thinking by the tax commissioner was he had $300,000, and he was going to continue spending it, $20,000, $21,000 at a time, where was he going to stop? Since he, since I got to write the questions, if the chair is not too bad, he can listen to me. Where did you plan to stop spending $300,000 that's in our budget? Sounds like you're trying to come under the $25,000 rule. That's wrong all day long, and we deserve to admit. If you, an attorney, heard what my verbal questions are, I'd like to, I'd like to know.
Okay, anybody else got anything?
But, bottom line, right now, I, I will not support, and I'm only one vote, transferring any money over to pay anybody with government of the paint building until we find out what we did on that.
Well, you got to, I, I just don't, I say that, because we have small contractors that have to go through a process, and they have to be inspected, just like anybody else, and to have a constitutional officer oversee a process that is really getting around that, I just think it's unfair, and just fundamentally wrong.
Commissioner, we have a process in place. We had money in the budget to make renovations that were discussed enough. This board was ready to do it the right way, and look out for the interest of the public and the taxpayers, and do it for the tax commissioner like he asked us to do it. But this process here is, I've never seen anything like it in my life.
I don't want to know if the county staff are involved.
County, I make it up, our facilities people were involved in innovation, form with their work.
If at all.
Well, Commissioner Stanball, I, I heard that some names thrown around, and I asked for a meeting, I want to get to the bottom of it, I asked for a meeting with the staff members, but they're both present, and I want the chair to be there, and I want to hear their side of the story. And I think if you sat down and thought that they should have staff members giving their side of the story, I think it would, it would have, it would have helped them to find out what their side of the story is. I, I ventured out to do that, but, and I think that's it, all I need to say.
Counsel, the way that it is going to proceed, I think, is to the finance committee, and the finance committee will like a renovation for the board?
Well, I, I mean, really, does it go to the finance committee? Commissioner Browning has these questions, and they need to go to the tax commissioner, and they need to go to the tax commissioner, and he needs to reply to the questions that were asked, not only Commissioner Browning, but to all the commissioners, before we start any process with finance. I mean, I, I think finance is down the road. My thing is, since he wants something in writing, then Aaron's giving something in writing.
That's the wish of the commission, that it proceeds that way. Okay. Anybody got any complaints about that process?
All right, thank you very much. Okay.
Can we take a five-minute break before we do this?
As long as it's just five minutes.
I got, I requested a five-minute break before the city-county meeting. I apologize, you got to get up. Been here three and a half, two and a half hours.
I've already been twice, what the hell's wrong with you guys?
It was her time.
Don't wait another, don't wait another minute.
Yeah, right. Yeah, yeah, you sure are.